Streaming. Whenever you're ready, Commissioner.
Hey. We'd like to welcome everyone to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the eighth day of June, 2020. We appreciate everyone's attendance and especially those in Internet land. We will begin this morning with the opening prayer offered by Jeannie Bartholomew. And our pledge will be led by George Coulson.
My dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that we have to be able to meet together as a commission for Iron County. We thank you for the many blessings that thou has given us and that thou has watched over us as this virus and stuff has gone through. We please ask that you please bless each of the commissioners that they might be able to conduct the meeting in a cultural way and that that we might be able to cover the things that need to be done for Iron County and be able to keep the citizens and everyone else in our thoughts. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is minutes approval, and that would be for May 26th, 2020. Discussion on the minutes.
I move approval of the May 26 minutes of the Iron County Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for May 26, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
These are approved.
Just one on that one, not as many as before.
Okay, let's see. Looks like we're gonna have some reports this morning. First up is our auditor, Dan Jesson. It's all good news, right, Dan?
Nothing but.
How are you, fine gentlemen, today?
Good, thank you.
So first off, watching, I'm watching budgets, revenues and expenses very closely, especially due to the, what's going on in the economy right now. I've set up some, some spreadsheets so that I can track on a month-to-month basis versus all of the previous years. Some of the revenues that I've identified that I'm kind of concerned about, so I'm watching those. There's a pretty good delay on a lot of these revenues by the time they, they're collected and go through the processes and get remitted and then we process them, so I haven't seen, I'm seeing a downward trend, but they haven't plunged, but there's months of a delay, so I'll be watching that throughout the year. We have completed our audit. I haven't yet seen the audit report, but I have seen, I mean, we have our financial statements. Our onsite audit has come and gone. That went smoothly. They were, they were here in person for a week. I met with the three of you guys. And, and I think that, I think that that process went really smoothly. Things are looking good. Of course, they will come and present when they have everything wrapped up and, and they'll come and present to you all here. I, we will, we only will have one finding this year. I think all in all, it was, it will be a good, a good year, a good report. Tax sale was just finalized about a week and a half to two weeks ago. As you know, this, this week, and Christine will be presenting it to you guys to approve as part of your official business, but and I don't want to steal her thunder, but I did want to address it because this year we did it online for the first time ever with a company called Bid For Assits. As you know, back when, we have to, before May even hits, we have to have this thing advertised usually around the first of the month. We advertise it in the paper. We put it on our website and we put it on Facebook this year. And we have to follow quite a process, so in the middle of that, we were, we were under red status and decided to go ahead and go with the online company, knowing that it would, there would be good things and bad things and, and we haven't yet met for our after-action because we're still processing and working through it, but overall, I would say that I think it went really smooth. We have, there was a, there was a couple of interesting things that I noticed as doing it online versus doing it in person. First of all, we, we had 135 properties, which is, which is about normal for the past few years that, that we've had. Before the sale started, we polled a whole bunch of those because they were campsites, the campsites that we've made the administrative decision not to sell. We're trying to aggregate those into a single property so then we can sell that off. So we act, so we had 99 properties at the end of the day that actually went to auction. And for the first time in my recollection, we've sold every single property. So I think that had something to do with the fact that we were accessing a larger market online. Another thing that I noticed is that we had much more bidding. The bidding went higher, which is, which we did expect. Again, if you have a bigger market, you're gonna have more bids. Property values are gonna go up higher. We had 213 registered bidders. Normally, we, we have, we'll usually have 100, 120 people here, but only about 50 to 60 actual bid tags. So this was about, you look at it that way, it was about a 400% increase on number of bidders. And I think that that's why we had so many, why the, why the properties went for a higher amount. And I do want to clarify that any additional monies that we collect, which is one of the things that makes me, this is the biggest point of vindication for doing it online. We get more money back, which then goes to the property owners above and beyond their taxes due. The whole process is ugly. It is the, by far, the least favorite thing that I do because we are literally taking people's property because they have not paid their taxes, whether they can or they can't. They haven't. And it's a statutory thing. We, we do it. We have to do it by law. It's gotta be executed. You know, it's something that has to happen. The auditor has to do it and I'm the auditor. But if we are gonna do it, if we're able to get them more money back in their pocket from, from the selling of the property, it eases that blow just a little bit. Of those 213 registered bidder, 108 of those were from Utah. The rest of those are from outside of Utah, which tells you that obviously we probably wouldn't have as many bidders in a, in a local onsite auction. We had 43 unique winners of properties. And 20 of those were from Utah, 15 from California, and the rest of them were from a single individual from one particular state, so that's really where the, the demographics of who bid. Another factor, and this is, I'm, I'm seeing this as a negative from doing it online, and I'm trying to figure out if there's some way that we can mitigate this, if we were to do it again online or not. We, right now, we have, the auction isn't fully settled. We have, I think, four properties that have not paid. I've been in the back complaining to George about it. I don't know why. I mean, if you show up at an auction, it's, there's all this legal ease, "Do not buy or beware," on and on and on and on. You pay a deposit and then you bid. When you win the property, you pay for the property. It's a pretty simple concept. And yet we have a number of people, including the house that was sold. We haven't sold a house for a while. And this year, we had a house that was sold. And I was shocked by the amount of money that this house went for. By the time you add the buyer premium that the auction charges, it was a healthy chunk of change. And there was, you know, within the first few minutes of the auction, we had like 45 bids and this thing bid way up. And I was thinking it was, it was going really high priced at 65,000, which is where it was at at that point. And if you'd see the house, you understand why I thought that was high. It can, it continued to bid up to $120,000, plus the buyer's premium on top of that. And I was shocked. Of course, now the winning bidder is saying, "Uh, I didn't want that house for that much money." So I don't know why, why he bid. We don't have any, any teeth other than blacklisting them and not allowing them to bid in future auctions and retaining the deposit of $200, plus the $35 fee that the bid house charges, the auction house. So it is what it is. We're trying to see if-
Go to the losing bidder and-
We're gonna go to the losing bidder, and I'm not sure on the mechanics of that, logistics through the auction, if they'll allow us to do that. We're gonna work, we're gonna work through that, but now you have the, you have the, the owner of the house who's in Limbo. The former owner of the house who's living there, who's in Limbo. They were getting pretty excited about a big fat check in the mail. Even though that they were, they probably couldn't have sold that house for that money on the, on the open market. So I'm seeing this as a little bit of a downside, but, but again, this was the winning bidder, but there were host of other bidders that bid it up to that price too. So there was a lot of people that were willing to buy this house for that money. And this wasn't somebody from California who hadn't seen the house. This is a Utah Cedar City bidder who paid that price. So anyways, we're working through a few of those, so Christine will today present to you what we have, what is settled, who was paid and all that stuff, and we'll work through these other few and, and get those processed and she'll come to you with, with those other ones in a, in a, in two weeks. But all in all, it was, it was a very, very smooth process. We didn't have the courthouse crowded full of people and all the chaos of that. It was kind of surreal to have this auction going on and the courthouse was quiet. And all of this bidding was happening. Christine spoke to a few people that were, you know, thought it was pretty fun enjoyable to just be able to sit at home in their underwear or whatnot and, and buy properties, so. We'll, we'll continue to look at it and have an after-action report. I'm, I'm holding my, my opinion, but I do know that many counties in Utah have been closely watching us and are excited to potentially do this in the future, so I'll be reporting to them as well once it's all said and done, but.
While you're there, Dan, that does make me feel a lot better about my concern of the 10% margin or commission. But if, if the property owners are receiving, you know, probably that much or more extra, then that makes me feel a lot better.
Yeah. That is the, that's the saving grace of the whole thing. I, I think that if, if the money was going to the county, I think it would be, you could make the argument that it was the county being greedy or immoral or whatnot. I think this is a more efficient process. You're getting more money for those people. And it's the 21st century. I mean, doing an online auction is, it only makes sense, but I don't know. It's, it's certainly not perfect, but one, one, one other advantage is you can't, people, you can't have people getting into fistfights. We don't have to have the sheriff present for an online auction like we do a, a one in, in person, so. Anyways, moving on, unless there's any other questions or discussion on that. Cindy has completed the tax roll and turned that over to me. I'm working with the State Tax Commission and to get the property tax rates set. The process is such that I generate a tax rate, the rate floats, to get the, all of the taxing entities within Southern, within Iron County, the amount of revenue that they are legally, legally obligated to, which is what they got last year plus any new growth. At that point, whether the entity can decide to go through truth and taxation and ask for more revenue, which is what triggers truth and taxation and doing a tax increase. I haven't spoken with too many of the cities yet in person, so I don't know of any that are planning on doing a tax increase. But I'm working to get those tax rate, the auditor tax rate certified, so then they can have their public hearings and pass their budgets. I would think that an entity right now doing a tax increase would be committing political suicide, but I leave that up to them. Sometimes people want to rail on the county for their taxes and I always tell people the commissioner are only responsible for the county's tax rate. If you are mad about your taxes, you need to talk to your, you need to go to your truth and taxation hearings of the school district and the city, and, and that's where your taxes get, get increased. I also hear a common misconception has to do with the assessor over assessing their property or mad that property values went up by 10%. Well, if all the values go up by 10%, the rate will drop and you'll pay the same amount of taxes. So it's not a, it's not a matter of the assessor assessing your value higher. It's a matter of the entities requesting more revenue. The rate floats so that the entities get the revenue they request. That's what is the driver of your taxes. Now, if your house goes up by 20% and on average everything goes up by 10, then of course you'll, you'll have a higher rate or higher taxes, dollar amount. So anyways, this is the process. If you know of anybody that has any questions or confused or anything, send them into my office. I'd love to explain it to them. So we'll be working through that. This, they have to have their budgets passed by June 30th. These are the fiscal year entities, which are all the cities, the water conservancy district and the school district, but they have to have their certified rate adopted by the 22nd of June. So this is a, this is always an interesting time of year for me for that, that part of it. Two more things. I'm hurrying quick, sorry. The CARES Act. We've talked a little bit about it. We will be receiving, Iron County will be receiving a large tranche of money. We will come in three tranches. It comes from the CARES Act. We, we can spend it in very, very specific ways and we have to spend it by November 30th. What we do not spend has to be sent back by December 4th. Unfortunately, we cannot use it to replace lost revenue in any shape or form. Meaning, we can't do like, we can do a grant program, for example, to small businesses or to individuals that have been dramatically impacted and, you know, you know, we can do whatever, but it can't come back to us in the form of property tax or people can't make a utility payment or anything that comes back to us in sort, some sort of, we can't structure a program that will end up being revenue replacement for us. We can't spend it on anything that would be in the normal context of our budget this year. It has to be COVID-19 related things. So I've, I've, we've had some email going back and forth. Everybody's been really busy. But I would, I'm hoping that we can meet together sometime soon and, and talk administratively. Commissioner Blake and the sheriff and emergency manager and Mike Phillips and I met for a little bit last week. There are some, some ideas on things that we can do, some COVID-19 related expenditures. You know, we could, we can do grants to different entities, Southwest Health Department, which is really where most of the hard costs have been spent on this. The county does have costs which will reimburse from this money. But at the end of the day, if we're gonna spend serious dollars, it's probably gonna have to be in the form of a, of a small business grant or, or something like that, a program. So I have some ideas. But of course, the other thing we can do is sit on that money and then turn it back. Do our part to not increase the federal deficit too high, but I have a hunch that money will be redirected. I, I think the reason the state is set the limit, the deadline they've set is so they can get that money back and redirect it somewhere else. But that's just, that's just my, my guess.
So it doesn't go back to the feds? It goes back to the state?
I think if it is not spent, so if you have more than 500,000 population as a city, you got a direct influx of money from the feds. That, that's only happened with Utah County and Salt Lake County. They got money straight from the feds. They're accountable to the feds for that money. Anything short of that is coming through the state of Utah. And so the state is now responsible for that money and they've now chosen, and some states chose not to. Some states kept all that money. The state of Utah says, okay, we're gonna divide it up by, they have the formula with population and with counties and, and cities. And I have, I've looked through it. I have studied the formula and I've, I've studied its allocation to Iron County and it's appropriate. All the cities get an exact amount per pupil. The counties get an amount. Anyways, it gets, it gets rather in-depth, but it is, it is consistent and most of the counties are pretty similar and it comes down to population. So that money will come to us, but if we don't spend it, we have to get it back to Utah and I'm pretty sure that they will then redistribute it or use it for Utah expenses that qualify. And then we are accountable to the state auditor who said he will audit this. And then we are also accountable to the feds through the single audit program. And what the single audit is, is in our annual audit, if we expend more than $750,000 of federal money in any given year combined, then we have to do a single audit. And we, we've done them the last two years because we've had all this NRCS money. And it's, it just takes things up a notch. The auditors look really closely at every last penny. They will pick a project. Usually they'll pick the biggest one, but they have to pick, it's like at least three quarters or two thirds of the total money that you got. They have to look at every check and every, everything. So we go through those single audits. If we ever have a lot of federal money, this will definitely qualify us for that, so we will be accountable to the state. We will be accountable to the, to the feds. And anyways, that's the process. So I don't know if you guys have, have some time this week. We also, and this is my final line item that, I'm working on a budget adjustment. It's time for our mid-year budget adjustment. I have things that need to be adjusted just as a matter of, you know, housekeeping with, with different grants that have come in and stuff like that. Also, we need to, we need to talk about some capital expenditures. We specifically did not budget for any vehicles because we were planning on launching our new fleet program this year. We have delayed the launch of the fleet program, but we do still need to talk about some vehicles where there are some, some higher needs. Specifically, in the sheriff's office, we need some vehicles, so we've, when we've talked about that a little bit, hit and miss on an email here and there. But now I'm done with the audit. I'm ready to look at budget adjustments, so if, if you guys can make some time and we can sit down and, and, and talk, kind of get your, get your information, what you're thinking, give information of what the requests are. Then in the next, in the next meeting or two, we can schedule a budget hearing and amend the budget, so. Anything you guys got for me? Hopefully it didn't take too much of the time.
So do you feel like this, you'd like to continue with this auction, this online?
I'm withholding judgment for the time being. I can see the good. I, I want to make sure that, that, that the legislature makes the changes that they've, they've said they were going to, but that's gonna have to happen in the normal session, which will be in February. So I will be debriefing in my office. I'll be debriefing with the, all the other county auditors that have, that have watched this. And frankly, we'll, we'll see on these ones that haven't. I, I'm not sure if, again, who, who bids on something and with no intention to buy it. You know, when we do them in person, that's the biggest frustration, at least it is this morning with me. I think we kind of put the fear of God into them a little bit more because we're here in person and they're here in the courthouse and we say, "You have to pay before you leave." You know, no checks. It's gotta be money orders, whatever. We'll let you run to your bank and back, but they have to pay the day of. And where it's an online auction, they just have to settle within three days and I think it gives people the chance to really think about it. Maybe they don't want to do that and I, I don't know.
This, this home that fell, sorry, go ahead. This home that fell through, that, that's really a mess, you know, where they did that to us.
Yeah.
I've, I've been in a lot of, involved in a lot of online equipment auctions over the years and I'm trying to remember. I think I had to give them a credit card and I know that's, that's a lot for a credit card, but there ought to be some, we gotta figure out some way to, if we're gonna continue to put some more teeth in that so people can't back out.
Maybe it's just setting the expectation higher. Maybe we need to, yeah, I don't know. It, it hasn't been, I mean, it's happened before. But when we're holding, when we're in charge of the auction here, A, we, we do put the fear of God into them a little bit more. And, and we have had people bail and they've said, "No, I, no, I wasn't misunderstood. I thought I was bidding on this property. I'm absolutely not, you know, you can't hold me to it." And they walk off and they're gone. We can blacklist them from a future auction, but then we can go right back to the second bidder. It's within an hour of the sale and say, "Hey, do you still want the property?" And, you know, they're still in the mindset of that. I have a hunch now, if we go back and it's, and it's a week and a half later, "Hey, you were the one that bid, you know, $119,500. Do you still want it?" I'm sure that person now, all the emotion of the auction is gone. It would be like, "I don't know what I was thinking even bidding that." You know, I mean, so who, who knows? We'll see. We did have another bidder that was buying a piece of property and it was a, the winning bid was 11 grand. And he is, "Ah, you, you guys misrepresented. You lied to me." And it's like, you know, we give the, we give all the information. It's researched. But we, but the whole point of it is caveat emptor. Buy or beware. Go do your research. Here is the legal description of the property. And you shouldn't be bidding unless you have done your research and know what it is.
Auctions are a funny thing.
And you guys may hear from him. He's a business owner in Cedar.
People come, people, the auctions I've been involved in, people come and they're, 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 they're determined to buy something, right?
Oh, yeah.
And I, and I've seen auctions where they've sold used cordless drills for more than you can buy them new. It's, it's just funny, you know. People are just-
Psychology, I, I think you should, it'd be fun to study the psychology, what goes on in an auction. I've been there too. You get, you get, you get high on something and you forget, like, you're just not grounded to reality sometimes, so. Whenever I bid, I go in with my price set and I do, I move all the decision out of my mind and I say, "Once it goes over that, I'll never bid again." Other than that, you end up paying twice what something's worth, so. Anyways, okay.
I was just gonna say, maybe the guy finally went by and lectured the property, huh?
Well, it looked a little better on Google Street View than it did in person. I mean, the windows were busted out and the grass was overgrown. And, uh, yeah, I, I just couldn't believe that it was going for as high as it was. And if you didn't have all of these people, and, and these are, these are adults. These are people that have paid a, a deposit. They have, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's the world we live in, you-
How much property was with that?
It was an acre and it was in a sub-
Full acre, so-
Full acre, you know, landscaped, you know, water and all that and, you know, great subdivision, so I, I get it, but I don't think the property was worth 120 by itself. And even if it was, you had to tear down the house and maybe you're gonna, you know, put money into the house, but at the end of the day, how much is it worth once you've put in, you know? So 120 was too much. It really was, but, but hey, there were, those were people in a, in an open market making that decision, so. Okay.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. All right, tourism. Maria, are you there? Can you hear us, Maria?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Alrighty, so I'm gonna start with outdoor recreation first because I want to talk a little bit more about tourism because that's really the topic at hand, I think, on most people's minds, but just wanted to let you know about two things that, that occurred with outdoor recreation. So COVID has definitely made people want to get outdoors and use, and camping is definitely on everyone's mind. Three Peaks Campground was busier than we've seen in a long time. Since COVID started, we generated $3,400 in camping fees. And to date, the parks have generated a little over $5,000, $400 in user fees. So I think last year total, we, we didn't even, I think we came close to like $6,000 or $7,000, so. And we're not a, we're now at halfway through the year, so COVID has definitely had an impact on what's happening, at least outdoor recreation-wise. And I did send you guys the report in the email. I sent this to you in an email, so you can look at it there. Uh, we did have a fire at the shooting range on May 30th. It was in the rifle range. No structures were damaged, but it was human caused and the people that started it left the scene before crews got there, so it was other, it was another user who called the fire in and there was another group in the area that supported his story, so. We had to close the range for two days just for the cleanup, but honestly, it cleared out a lot of brush and kind of did us a favor, but if that person hadn't been there to call it in, it could have been a lot worse. It would have gone, it could have crossed into, into the Three Peaks- A lot worse. It would have gone, it could have crossed into into the Three Peaks general area. Who knows where it would have gone from there. Just, uh, we do have several events. They're still planning to move forward in the parks. Uh, we have, uh, new this year or returning is We Rock. So the rock crawlers are coming back. We haven't seen them for a couple of years. Uh, they are not able to do their championship audit in California where they've been doing it, and so they're moving it here. Uh, we're, and so we're excited to have them. They'll be here in July. Anything? Do you have any other questions about outdoor recreation or any questions?
Alma, could you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, are they going to have a signing ceremony for the patent at Three Peaks? I know that was postponed because of COVID.
Um, I have not heard back from them, so I'll reach out to them again and just see if they want to move forward. With something.
I think it would be nice to still do that. That was, that's been quite a wonderful thing to finally get that done. It's good to see public land being transferred into private ownership for good purposes.
Yeah. Yeah, we're glad to have it done, that's for sure. So.
Or I guess federal into county ownership, but still, yeah, closer to the people.
Closer to the people.
I guess I have a question on the on the campground up the canyon.
Uh, the Five Mile, I talked to Veronica again the other day and kind of lit a fire under. They have, they still haven't got the special use permit completed. I asked her if we could go in and start doing the work before that and she said, no. I know she's very concerned about liability, but anyway, I will keep the B on her and. Hopefully, pretty soon we can get moving on that. But like, there's a young lady, I can't remember her name, that in the office there, a very nice gal that's working on that. But she had a number of, you know, projects, so hopefully it'll be soon.
Great.
Anything else, Maria?
Okay, um, I will move on to the tourism report. Uh, I just wanted to, I think this is pretty much what's on every, on a lot of people's minds because we are definitely. Uh, been impacted by COVID. John, are you able to allow me to share my screen?
Uh, yeah, I've got your tourism report up on my screen.
I need to share the screen that I have here. I have a slideshow.
I think it's on your end. You've got to tell it to to allow the screen to share.
It will not let me share my screen.
We just got your, we just, we just saw your face.
Yeah, it says that you asked the organizer to make you a presenter.
Oh, well, alright.
Let's see. Can you see my screen now?
Yep.
Alright, wonderful. I am trying to see if I can get this into this slideshow. I'm not sure why it won't go into slideshow. Well, um, are you okay just looking at it this way?
Sure, I can see it good.
Okay. Alright, so economic loss. Now, this is an estimate based on a twenty-eight period. So this is when COVID started through mid-April. We're estimating that we lost about a little over eleven million dollars in traveler spending, which was equated to about a daily loss of over four hundred thousand dollars. A lot of that was because Brian had still had another, had another month to go. Then they usually. See about forty thousand skiers during that time. We also had two tournaments that canceled. With the Utah Summer Games during that period. So you can see, uh, this is. Kind of an indication of what's the possibility of what we're going to be seeing in terms of losses. The occupancy comparison, I just wanted to show you. So starting that first week of COVID, when we were all kind of in that shutdown mode. You can see that our occupancy rate dropped into the twenties. So we were clear down to twenty point four on that Saturday. Um, and our revenue, our average daily re, the revenue, which is the ADR. Uh, dropped to sixty dollars. So that's basically what hotels were charging, uh, if they were filling rooms at that time. The chart at the bottom is our last report for the May thirtieth. And so you can see that occupancy is definitely starting. To rise. Uh, we're now back up into the sixties. Midweek is definitely where we're going to, you know, we've been seeing challenges for sure. But we're glad to see that our occupancy is definitely rising. The thing that concerns us most is definitely the ADR. So we're, our, you know. Our cost per room or our charge per room is not rising as to the level that it was at last year. So we're, uh, we're concerned about that in terms of our revenues. Uh, the sentiment, so most people are, they were, you know, back in March or, I mean, early April. The sentiment towards travel was pretty much down. Um, and now we're we're getting close to the pre-shut down figures. About sixty-two percent of the travelers are saying they want to get back into traveler, into traveling. But the, it's mostly like the millennials and the Gen Z's and some of the baby boomers. Those are. Those are the ones that are saying that they're looking at travel. And most travelers are saying they're likely to take a staycation rather than a vacation, which makes total sense. You know, people don't want to get on airplanes, so. Iron County is in a really good position right now because they, we're, you know, a destination that's typically a staycation. Uh, destination. We don't rely so much on international travel. We do to a point, but. It's not, it's not like Bryce Canyon or Zion where international travelers, travel is at least forty or fifty percent of their. Of their visitors. So. Um, so we're, we're definitely in a good, in a better position than some of our neighbors. Um, and then three quarters of Americans are planning to travel this year. We'll research how a destination is managing the coronavirus situation. And they're focusing on safety, so. Let's see, I don't know why this is so slow. So that's why we came up with this program, the Cedar City, the Brian Head and the Para One Together campaign. We did this with our. With our partners with Cedar City Economic Development. And we delivered to a lot of the businesses that were impacted by COVID with some social distancing signage. Just because that's one less thing that they would have to spend money on. And we, we themed it after the banners in the downtown of Cedar City. Um, and it's had a nice response and the and the visitors are, I think it's kind of clever. That we have such interesting social distancing signage. So, um, right now, all of our efforts are on this, on basically on the staycation. So we're concentrating our marketing efforts on areas of within a three hundred mile drive. I wanted to show this to you because. Uh, I think maybe people are asking you what, you know, because tourism is a county department, you know, what are people, what are we doing to get people to. Uh, come back and how are we going to deal with this whole thing with Shakespeare and Summer Games not happening? And so we're doing. A lot of of marketing in the immediate area. Of probably more than I've ever done in the years that I've been here. Uh, going as, you know, going, concentrating on the Wasatch Front. Um, we're starting on Las Vegas because now they're starting to open up, so people are feeling a little more comfortable with their, you know. Definitely want to get out of town. We're definitely seeing the Las Vegas and California plates on the, in town. So we're just kind of, we're amping a lot of that up. We're concentrating a lot with radio. So we have live broadcasts on KSL Radio. Cherry Creek and some Las Vegas media. We have Good Things Utah, which is a tele, a popular television program, a daytime program. They will be doing a live broadcast here in Cedar City next week. We're also doing a live broadcast with KSL at the end of this week on their radio, but Good Things Utah is TV. Where our strategy is roam our backyard. We're just, you know, come and. Uh, come and visit and discover all the things you probably didn't know about, uh, about Iron County. We're also concentrating a lot on family reunion groups, because that's generally five or, five or. More rooms that are booked. And family reunions, even though gatherings are a little. Strange right now, they're still very, very important and people are kind of looking at ways that they can take advantage of some of these lower rates that are out there. We're also doing some support local campaigns. Visitors actually want to know that you're supporting your local businesses. It's actually more important now than it ever has been, so. The support local campaigns will be continued, like the local dining. And some, we have a local book that will be coming out in a few weeks. You'll see, be starting to see a lot more billboards along I fifteen and I seventy. We picked up quite a few. From Las Vegas through the Wasatch Front. This is just kind of an example of some of the boards that we've, we've been doing. We definitely want to concentrate on the outdoor recreation. Because that is the audience and that is the traveler that wants to definitely get out. Um, and then we're also doing what's called online streaming, which is called OTT. So every, everything that you. All the, I mean, like all the shows that you watch on online and on your mobile device. There's generally an advertisement that comes up either at the beginning or somewhere in, depending on how you pay for your subscription. And so we have a full-on OTT programming that's starting and it started actually a couple of weeks ago. And it's running from Salt Lake to Las Vegas. It runs everywhere on all subscription rate except for Hulu. Hulu's too expensive. At this point. But when COVID hit, almost every, so many people turned to their online streaming services. Uh, because, you know, of course they were stuck at home. There were two hundred and thirty-five million people that have been. Uh, in a certain amount of lockdown or had to force to stay home during the COVID. So of course they were turning to online streaming and content was really important. So we're just going to keep going with that. And I wanted to just kind of show you a little bit of what we're, one of the things that we were running. So that's, things that are similar to that will also be running through our digital marketing, which will. Is the the weird ads that follow you around after you kind of, you do some searches and. And so these are, there'll be video ads that will follow you as well. So those, that's a lot of what we're focusing our marketing on right now. Um, I did want to talk to you about some of the events that are happening that are helping fill our weekends. We definitely have the baseball tournaments happening. Let's see, sorry. Uh, and you can see that they're happening on several weekends, just about every other weekend through through September. Uh, Brianhead Resort is resuming their summer operations on June twenty-sixth and with full. With anticipation that they will be doing everything that they generally do in the summertime, so that's good for us, for all of us. Uh, we have the Colin Ray Concert on June thirteenth. Uh, I had mentioned the Rock Crawling Championship at Three Peaks, which is July tenth and twelfth through the twelfth. Uh, we also have the High School Mountain Bike Championships that are still moving forward, September eighteenth and nineteenth and October ninth and tenth. So definitely many things that are happening that are going to help what's happening with our tourism. And hopefully we can make up for some of this unfortunate situation with Shakespeare and Summer Games not happening. We did hear from Summer Games that they may be also bringing tournaments this summer. If we do go to Green. Uh, they're looking at several tournaments in terms of, I think it's some basketball. Bringing them in sometime in July and August. So I'll hope to report on that at our, at my next department report. Do you have any questions for me?
Maria, I've got a question. You know, I heard that the, one of the main reasons they canceled Shakespeare this year was because the Actors Union wouldn't support. The actors coming in.
Yeah.
Have they thought about, you know, Shakespeare started with local talent, you know, many years ago. If they thought about trying to get some, and we have some awesome local talent, if they thought about trying to do that. Uh, trying to put together some local talent, having some plays, maybe on a minimal scale or.
So from my understanding. Um, the, their agreement with the Actors Union does not allow them. To utilize non-equity actors for any, for any kind of production. For production, uh, that is under the name of the Utah Shakespeare Festival. So they have a certain percentage of actors that have to come from equity in order for them to have that equity relationship. That union relationship. So, uh, because I know, I think everyone has thought the same thing. But and and that was something they were trying to deal with before they made this final decision, but it ultimately came down. To they could be sued by Actors Equity if they were to pursue. Any kind of production without their actors.
That's sad because I think, I think it'd be great for a community. I think people would support them too, you know, I think that'd be.
I agree. We, we asked them, you know, what about the Green Show? Could you do the Green Show on a nightly basis? And I think they were facing the same issue with that.
Thank you. Alright, does that cover both of your two resume and parks, Rick?
Yes.
What you've covered. Okay, any questions? Thank you very much, Maria. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Sheriff in Corrections. Sheriff Carpenter, thank you.
We'll pull that up. Just leave it down. Not be down a peg, man.
Good morning. As soon as John gets the slide pulled up, we'll go ahead and get going. You go to the next slide there, John. So I'd like to to start off with current law enforcement issues and of course. At the the top of that is the protests surrounding the the death of George Floyd. I'd like to just read this statement if I may. First, my heart and prayers go out to Mr. Floyd's family and all families who have suffered loss during this senseless violence has erupted. It's time for it to end. We in law enforcement do not like how Mr. Floyd was treated any better than does the rest of the nation. Because of the poor choices of four officers, the nation is. Because of the poor choices of four officers, the nation is outraged. We in law enforcement, who chose this profession to serve our communities because we love our communities and the people in them and want to protect them from harm, are more outraged and incensed than anyone. This has brought dishonor to an honorable profession and has put outstanding men and women, most who have families of their own, in harms way needlessly. It has victimized thousands of people across the nation who have had nothing to do with what happened to Mr. Floyd. If this wasn't enough, we have disreputable defense attorneys in our own state who think it's cute to advertise with quote, "Shoot the cops." Shame on them. I hope the bar has intestinal fortitude to hold them accountable for this, for their despicable and unethical conduct. Though many are concerned and seek change, I hope our legislatures will let cool heads and common sense prevail rather than passing ludicrous bills that are ill-conceived and written only in the heat of the moment with no long-term perspective of unintended consequence. Now is not the time for such law to be made. No one has more to lose than those of us who have taken a constitutional oath to protect you. So before our legislatures pass short-sighted laws, let me put some things into a stark and different perspective. According to two thousand eighteen national statistics, law enforcement had over fifty million contacts with the public. In those contacts, forty-eight thousand three hundred and fifteen officers were assaulted. Fourteen thousand seven hundred and three encounters involved dangerous weapons. Thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four officers were injured. Nine hundred and ninety contacts involved the use of firearms. And yet, the rate of officer-involved shootings was only point zero 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 one nine eighths of a percent of those contacts. However, in two thousand eighteen, fifteen, fifty-six officers were killed in the line of duty. So far, in just six months of two thousand twenty, fifty-two officers have died in the line of duty. One officer, Nate Ladey of the Ogden Police Department, was laid to rest over the weekend. A victim of a shooting while responding to a domestic violence call in an effort to protect those who could not protect themselves. Life is a gift of God. All lives matter and, and we must all strive to protect all life. Here in Cedar City, we've had two protests on Sunday, May thirty-first. Both of those were peaceful. We had an additional protest this last Saturday. Again, it was a peaceful protest. I want to just express my appreciation to those people that protest. I think it's important that we as Americans exercise our First Amendment rights. But we have a responsibility to do it in a peaceful manner. And I think that as I affiliated with these people that were protesting and, and providing traffic control and other things to, of law enforcement nature, they were very courteous. They were very kind. They expressed their gratitude to us for helping them be able to exercise their First Amendment rights in a peaceful manner, and I'm very grateful for that. I think that that is an example for the rest of the nation. If you go to the next slide, please, John. Continuing with current law enforcement issues, what has the sheriff's office been dealing with? Since COVID nineteen was declared in March, we've seen an increase in fatality, traffic accidents with at least six fatalities in Iron County since the beginning of March. I can't tell you the exact numbers because a lot of what we did as the sheriff's office was helping UHP and UHP was the one that kept track of those numbers. But please remember, speed kills and seatbelts save lives. In every one of these fatality accidents, speed was a factor in the, in the uh not using seatbelts was the other factor that needlessly caused the loss of these lives. So please remember, speed kills and seatbelts save lives. Homicides and suicides. We assisted Cedar City Police Department with a homicide, uh suicide where a subject killed his stepfather and then after he was confronted by law enforcement, he killed himself. We've also seen other suicides across the county. Domestic violence. So far, the sheriff's office alone has had thirty-four family fights and twelve assaults. Child abuse. We assisted Bryanhead Marshals in investigating a shaken baby case, which was an aggravated assault on a child. And uh, you know, my, my heart goes out to that two-month little child that was brutally shaken by her, her stepfather. Alcohol fences and DUIs. So far, we've had six DUIs and a fatality at the Newcastle Reservoir that were alcohol-related. We've continued our search for Mrs. Carol Stratton, who went missing last October. And uh, you know, in, in doing that, we want the family to know that we haven't given up looking for Mrs. Stratton. We want our community to know that we take every investigation serious and we're going to do all in our power to resolve that investigation. And finally, we want to remind people that while they're recreating in the Three Peaks area, that we're still missing a person. And that while they're out having a good time with their families, we appreciate any efforts that they make while they're out in that back country to keep an eye out for anything that looks suspicious and report it to the sheriff's office that may lead us to be able to recover her. Our next slide, uh future ops and concerns. Dan has already addressed us a little bit that our vehicles were, we very much appreciate what the County Commission has done in, in helping us replace vehicles over the past two years. But we are still in a critical phase. We've got basically two vehicles that we can use as reserve vehicles over what we currently have. The fact of the matter is, is there was a period of time where we got behind in vehicles and they've just, they're used hard and they just are, are worn out. And uh, you know, we're, we're at a critical juncture with vehicles right now. And then uh with the jail, uh we've talked about a new jail. Uh with the COVID nineteen, we've received a, a short reprieve on crowding, but that's not going to last. You know, we must establish a plan in moving forward with the new facility. If we don't, we can expect to pay out huge amounts of money in putting lipstick on a pig. You know, we've got issues with uh HVAC and sewer and other things in the jail that we need to, to be able to, to look at addressing. And I, I would like to be able to have that money set aside for a new facility rather than, than just keep putting money into a facility, a facility that isn't going to meet our needs in the future. And then of course, the threat of lawsuits is, is overcrowding and other things arise, then we, we have the problem of, the threat of, of lawsuit. So we need to take those things into consideration and I hope that in the future that we'll be able to really come up with a, an active plan to be able to start looking at the future for a jail facility. Are there any questions at all for me?
Maybe just a comment, I was shocked last night to hear that Minneapolis is disbanding their police force.
Yeah, you know, it, it is unbelievable and, and I'm, I'm very curious as to what they're going to do. You know, here back in December, I had the opportunity of going to Israel with Jenza and one of the sheriffs that was on that trip was actually the sheriff over that county. And I've been in close contact with him with the things that they're dealing with. And uh they're, they're not prepared as the sheriff's office to be able to take over for that police department. That is a huge city and a huge responsibility and, you know, I, I think that that's very short-sighted on, on the part of, of their, their uh city council.
And I guess in light of that, we appreciate what you do and your force and, and uh you do a tremendous job.
We, we appreciate that very much. I've got wonderful deputies and I've got a wonderful community. And that's the, the thing that, that I think really makes us successful is that, that the deputies here truly care about our community and our community truly cares about our deputies. That makes all the difference in the world. And uh we, we greatly appreciate our community and, and all the uh love and support that they've given us during this time. We very much appreciate it and we're very grateful for them and we're very grateful for the commission, so thank you.
Thank you. Shalon? Yeah, did you have a comment?
Uh I just gonna say, without law enforcement, things would fall apart very rapidly and we see some of that already happening because people, leaders saying, well, you know, stand down and so on. I mean, we, we have to have continuing law enforcement. There's just too much pressure from the adversary, not to get religious, but if, if people know that they don't have to, you know, be honest, then a lot of people choose to not be honest and we have, we have to have law enforcement. We appreciate you so much. Sorry.
You're okay, thank you. All right, so our quarterly report for the Iron County Jail, um our overall status with our budget, we're at forty-three percent, so we're about right where we should be, um especially with the COVID. Our unexpected expenses, of course, are related to the COVID nineteen, getting our PPE gear. Our culinary costs per mil have gone down two cents, so that's good. All right, our total bookings have gone down significantly, um that being, not that we, we didn't necessarily restrict anybody coming to the jail, but the outside agencies, they were very generous to um kind of filter through the people that really needed to come into the jail and expose our inmates, also our staff and our families to, to the threat of the COVID, so that is very much appreciated. We're still housing um our state and federal inmates. Um our numbers haven't really gone anywhere with them. Uh they, we've been housing the same ones, so they haven't been being transported physically all over the state. Um there, there's a few, but, so those numbers have stayed pretty consistent. Our video, visit, our video hearings through the court have actually been really great. I hope they maybe keep some of that going once we get over the COVID. That helps us with the safety of our staff, the inmates, transportation costs. So that's been, that's been a really good thing over there.
How much do you think that saves you?
Well.
Quite a bit, doesn't it?
Yeah, our gas bill has been like our, it's been significantly low the last couple of months, which has been good. Um but the, the safety and not having to transport, transport those inmates throughout the city has been really good.
Does it seem to work well?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been really great, actually, so.
It's great.
All right, our work crew unfortunately has, due to staff shortages, has not been going. We're hoping that by the end of the month, we're going to be back on track. Um we have a few officers coming out of the academy on July second, so that will, that will help us be able to put Deputy Burr back out there. Um he's anxious to get back out working. We still have, we have one vacant position. We also had Deputy Franklin resigned in this last quarter, so we um have two going through the background process. And we'll have four come out of the academy on that July second date, so that's going to be really great for our overtime. And um the planned projects and expenditures that we have right now, our fire alarm system, we've been, it's probably our own fault, but we've been, we've been talking up how it's lasted all these years since nineteen eighty-seven. Um it's taken a dive and so we right now are getting bids to upgrade the fire alarm system. Also, our account, our, we have one attorney booth in our, in our facility. Right now, we haven't, we've been trying not to restrict any uh attorneys from having access to their clients. Other counties aren't doing that and we've had a lot of attorneys telling us, "Thank you so much for letting us just come in and have access to our clients." Um what that does however, is it ties up that one attorney booth that we have. So what we've looked at is we have a bondsman's booth that we can kinda move to be able to at least do um some of the Southwest Behavioral Health and Treatment Program evaluations. So we are looking at installing a intercom and an extra desk in there so that they don't have to be on the phone and have their head tweaked for hours while they're doing those evaluations, so that is something that we're looking at right now. Uh we just finished jail standards. We haven't got our report back um on how we did with those. Again, there's six hundred and eight of them, keeps us on track. Um the state, the state of Utah is now starting to, they're gonna have their own set of standards. I think there's two hundred and thirty of those, so we'll start those back up in July. Attached to the, to that, I have our budget summary, uh our jail revenue summary and also the cost per mil. One good thing that we have started on a positive note over at the jail is we've started an Iron County Court, Iron County Jail Quarterly Newsletter. Corporal Jared Hanson created this for us, I'll give you copies, um something just to put a positive light on the fact that we can celebrate our employees and their accomplishments and things that they do throughout the time, throughout their lives. Any questions for me?
Thank you, great report.
Thank you. Thank you, Shalon, appreciate all you do. Is there anything, any commission reports?
I've, excuse me, I've got a couple of things. I've got way too many handouts. First of all, this has been a, it's been a challenging few months, to say the least. The last couple of weeks, I'd say have compounded those challenges more than uh I think any of us are comfortable with as far as some of the things that are going on in our society as well as things that are going on here locally. I really appreciate Sheriff Carpenter's remarks today. I think he put that in perspective very well. I would like to, to just take a few minutes and talk about some of the observations and things that I've been involved in over the last couple of weeks here. On uh, on May twenty-eighth, as Sheriff Carpenter talked about, Officer Nathan Lyday of the Ogden City Police Department was shot and killed while responding to a, to a, a domestic violence. I wear a couple of different hats in the community. Sometimes those hats change quickly, sometimes I'm like spinning the hat. I've been a police officer for twenty-four years here in Iron County. I left the Cedar City Police Department. I retired in two thousand eighteen with, with about twenty-three years of service, somewhere in there at the Cedar City Police Department, so that I could focus full-time on, on this position in the Iron County Commission. A few months, about nine months after I left the Cedar City Police Department, I was approached by Enix City. I thought that I was going to a meeting uh with the city manager to talk about some uh right-of-way issues that we were dealing with in Enix City. I left there, uh offered me a, a position with the Enix City Police Department, a, a part-time position to, so that helped them kind of consult with them and help them with their investigations division. I accepted that position and, and currently work with Enix City one or two days a week. This does a lot of, it keeps my foot in the door with an occupation that I love. Uh many, you know, the vast majority of people don't understand, when I took, uh, when I left the Cedar City Police Department to concentrate on the commission, I foregoed my law enforcement retirement. I'm not, not collecting that. By keeping my foot in the door in law enforcement, once uh I finish with the Iron County Commission, it will give me an opportunity to uh get back into that arena as well as preserve the uh, preserve the retirement that I worked so hard for. All that aside, that, uh, one other silly hat that I've worn for many years is that as a, as an investigator for the medical examiner's office. I've done that now for about fifteen years. On that day, uh that Officer Lyday was murdered. Because of my. because of my role with the medical examiner's office, I was following up on a case. I have access to all their files. As I was looking at my case, I noticed Officer Lyde's case, that I had access to that file. And I read that file, I read that report, and knew from day one the gruesome circumstances and exactly what happened in his case. That young man who'd only been an officer for about fifteen months died courageously and honorably in trying to preserve the life of a family. He was killed by a coward. That always cuts deep in the law enforcement community and just in our community as, as a whole. That was May twenty-eighth. May thirtieth, just two days later, the protest in Salt Lake City turned from a peaceful protest to a nightmare that we do not usually see here in Utah. The frustrating part for me was watching a police car burn, watch property being destroyed, seven-eleven vandalized and looted. An order from Mayor Mendenhall came from the top-down that the police were not to engage with this behavior. For four hours, that continued until the, the Salt Lake Police Department was able to engage and actually enforce the law. By that time, there were many, many officers from around the state that responded, including officers from the Ogden Police Department, who had just two days earlier lost one of their own brothers. To watch those Ogden Police Officers on the TV, knowing the pain and, and suffering that they're going through now, being subject to things thrown at them, being hit with things, spit on, screamed at, and not being able to engage as their trained to do was heartbreaking. May thirty-first, on Sunday, we got word Saturday night that there were gonna be protests here in Cedar City. I became involved in that, along with Sheriff Carpenter, George Coulson, our emergency manager, became involved in the planning for that early on. I am so proud of our local law enforcement. There was no talk of, okay, we're gonna let them break this many windows. We're gonna let them throw this many items at police before we respond. Had those, had that protest turned anything like we saw around the country and in Salt Lake City, it would have been immediately stopped and order immediately returned. I was really proud that day to work with Sheriff Carpenter, Chief Mike Berg from Parowan City, Chief Adams from Cedar City, Chief Benson from Parowan, Chief Ames from Enix City, Lieutenant Nielsen from Southern Utah University Police, Lieutenant Riches from the Highway Patrol, and also Mr. Mike Maurer from the Governor's Office. We coordinated those efforts with him. That first day, those protesters marched, they yelled, there were some, there were some emotions. But I was very grateful to see those young people be able to exercise their First Amendment rights. As a police officer, just like Sheriff Carpenter said, when I see other cops behaving badly and bringing shame and dishonor on our profession, it pisses me off. Because I know that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of innocent people, including hundreds of police officers that are gonna suffer serious bodily injury or death because of that. I was very proud that day to watch our, our young people. I was even more proud of our, of our law enforcement response and the fact that we didn't have to, to take those ugly steps that we're all prepared to do. Skip ahead a week, Saturday, there was another, there was another protest. I was again called to, to assist with that. And I didn't have a very good attitude going into that protest. There were a lot of things going on Saturday. My, my shift with Enix Police Department that day, I watched a man die and then watched the, the paramedics and, and heroes get him back. It was always an emotional roller coaster when that happens, but that was awesome. I responded to a chronic domestic violence call, with the aid of the sheriff's office, to clear a house where, quite frankly, weapons and domestic violence are involved and on a regular basis. We had a major fire in Cedar City that took resources from every department in the county, as well as assistance from the St. George Fire Department. And all this happened at the same time that the protest was starting. Our, our numbers were few, and it was, again, awesome to watch the law enforcement response because there were only a handful of us, including Cedar City Police Officers, UHP, Iron County Sheriff's Deputies, to handle the protest because our resources were stretched thin across the whole county. Again, that protest was relatively peaceful. It, it was a little bit more agitated than the one before. I blocked traffic at two hundred North and Main to allow them to cross, and the young lady stopped and screamed, "White Li-" White Lives Matter. That's gonna get us in trouble. "Black Lives Matter" stood and screamed, "Black Lives Matter," in my face. That's fine. All lives matter. So, at the end of that, I, I had an opportunity to, I ended up back at SUU, spoke with a couple of the organizers, and, and, like I said before, I don't know that my attitude was where it needed to be. Two young men that I had an opportunity to, I ended up speaking with them in the parking lot for about an hour and a half, and I, I wanna mention them. The first one's David Nugwin, and I, I always butcher his name. He's the leader of the Asian Students at Southern Utah University. The other young man is named Newman Kante, who's the upcoming student body president. After having an opportunity to speak with them and, and, and understand some of their frustrations, but not necessarily their frustrations, but the fact that they knew that there was the people that wanted to demonstrate, and they knew that if they became involved and led the charge, that people wouldn't get stupid. That they would be able to direct the, the protest in a peaceful manner, that they would be able to encourage people to do the right thing. And I really appreciate the leadership of these two young men for, for doing that and, and keeping us safe and keeping those protesters safe. Let them have the ability to exercise their First Amendment right. I came to a realization this weekend that I care about every, every citizen in Iron County. That's not a new thing, but to see the diversity, to see people come together, I'm really proud to represent the folks of Iron County. I'm really proud of our law enforcement. I'm really... To watch, during this whole thing, I had Officer Lyde's funeral livestreaming on the computer in my vehicle. And to watch and understand the sacrifice that that young man made so that we can exercise our rights, and to see how our, our citizens, our law enforcement, our public safety, our fire departments, to see how they responded to a similar situation that could have gotten really ugly, makes me very grateful to live in Iron County and to be able to work with such high-quality people. I know we're running way late, I didn't mean to take this time, but I, I'm, I am really proud of the, the people that I get to work with in the county. And I, I pray for you as constituents daily, as well as our, our heroes. And I'll be quiet now. I appreciate the, the opportunity to take a few minutes. Thank you.
That was well said, thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Thanks so much, Mike.
All right, we'll go ahead and take a seven-minute break. We'll resume this meeting at ten-thirty.
Great, how are you folks?
Hey. Get into KFC? Oh, I'm good.
We live, John?
Yep.
Alright, we'll go ahead and resume our county commission meeting this eighth day of June 2020. We appreciate everyone being here. We'll go to our first agenda item, which is public comments. Public comments are up to three minutes per speaker. This should not repeat others' comments, and this is only for items not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak to an agenda item later, let's hold your comments for that. No items related to commission's role in an appeal board. Comments should be directed at the commission, no attacks on other people's character. Are there any public comments? Alright, seeing none, we'll go to item number two, where we present the results of the delinquent property tax sale held May 28, 2020 to the commission for review for making adjustments if necessary and approval of the tax sale. This is presented by Christine Louder.
Can we do the next item first?
You bet. Is Carrie here? Oh, there you are. Okay. Justin. So this is item number three. This is a review and possible approval to process escaped assessments for prior years on APN C-1135-1-20-2 and APN number A-504-3-3-6.
Okay, so the first one, we're gonna go backwards. A-504-3-3-6. Gary and Patricia, I'm gonna butcher this name, Fegoleski. Their home apparently was escaped, and they're adding it just for 2019. Approximate tax they're gonna owe is $197.71. That's not a lot of money. But I need to process that. And these escapes will allow them a 30-day window to appeal it because they missed their windows for disclosure time. The second one is a little more. It goes back five years, back to 2015. Again, this is mountain property. The cabin on the property was escaped, so it's being added. The total amount that's owed are gonna be owed approximately is $2,577.54. I just need approval so I can run the escapes and submit the tax bills to the treasurer.
I'm sorry, plead ignorance, but could you explain the escape clause a little bit?
Escape properties happen when homes are brand-new built. Sometimes the home was previously on a different parcel. They've mistakenly put it on a different parcel. I don't know the circumstances between these two. It just says, one says the improvement was never assessed on the cabin, and this other one, it looks like it was a modular that was moved onto the home in December of 19. So it was escaped for 19s because it was after the tax rule was put in.
So it was overlooked, basically?
That one didn't have buildings.
A modular. So that's typically how they...
And so we are voting to basically approve what?
For us to put these on the assessment rules for those prior years and for me to create a tax rule to the treasurer.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Okay. Any discussion?
I get it now. I was going to...
I'm glad I'm the only one that did so.
This is the first one of these I've seen, so I didn't understand it fully. So thank you. I would move for approval to process the escaped assessments for prior years on APN C-1135-1-20-2 and APN A-504-3-3-6.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to review and approve to process escaped assessments for prior years on the APNs noted by Commissioner Blake. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Carrie. Sign. Alright, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go back to item number two. And I'll reread that. Presenting the results of the delinquent property tax sale held May 28, 2020 to the commission for review for making adjustments if necessary and approval of the tax sale. Christine?
Okay, thanks for skipping me.
You're good.
I told Carrie to talk slow, but that didn't happen. Okay.
He talks kinda fast.
Yeah. Alright, catch my breath. Alright, May tax sale. As you are aware, we held our tax sale online this year. It was very interesting to watch. We had, to begin with, gotta catch my breath. To begin with, we had 137 parcels that we began the tax sale with. Some of those were the campsites which we removed. So, beginning with 137, we ended up with 99 that actually went to sale on May 28. Of those 99, every one of the properties were sold. We did not have any properties, which we generally do, struck off to the county because we know that they're the West Desert or they're rural town site or junk properties. But because it was held online, we had a lot of interest in it. And of the 43 bidders that we had bidding on the 99 properties, 21 were totally new to bidding with the county, and 12 were previous bidders that have bid in past years. The winning, what did I say?
We had 213 total registered, but just the ones that won.
Yes, we had 213 that actually registered, which was unheard of. And of those, 43 were bidders that were successful. 21 were new bidders that were successful, and 12 previous bidders that were successful. The numbers on the back, at the top, below the yellow highlighted numbers, is the amount that we don't have a problem with receiving right now. Those at the bottom in blue are individuals. The first one, Ryan Brindley. I spoke with him this morning. He informed me he is not going to pay because the property was not advertised well enough to indicate that there was only a percentage of that property that he was buying a interest in that property, basically. And so he wasn't going to pay it. Freddy Lopez, I have not been able to reach him yet. I've called him twice this morning. And Cody Roberts, he left me a voice message. I have not spoke directly with him, but he indicated that he paid too much money for it, and it's not worth that much, and he's not going to pay it either. So those at the bottom, we're kinda left hanging with at the moment. I have been in touch with Bid for Assets this morning, and they are going, on the Brindley property and the Roberts property, they are going to contact the bidder that was prior to them, offer the property to them at their bid amount, and hopefully they will accept it. We'll have to see that they will go with that. I will know Wednesday whether or not they have accepted our offer for them to purchase the property at their bid amount. Freddy Lopez, as I...
Can they go down the line until they find somebody that...
We can only go back one.
Just one person?
Yeah, with our code. So if that happens, then the property comes back to the county, and we'll have to decide what to do with it. So, my recommendation to the county is that we accept the tax sale as it is indicated at the top with a total, well, let me back up. The total bids for the property were $423,396. That were for the properties that Bid for Assets has received payment for. The $3,840 is the $40 registration fee that it costs to register the auditor's deeds. So, we will receive $427,236 from Bid for Assets for the properties that there are no issues on.
And that doesn't include the...
That does not include the three at the bottom. Okay? So my recommendation is that we accept those as presented, and that you approve those with no exceptions. The three at the bottom, I request that we table those until the next commission meeting, where we will have a result of, you know, what transpires, whether they come back to the county or whether the second-to-last bidder accepts our offer for them to purchase the property at their bid. And then hopefully by then, I will have been in contact with Freddy Lopez.
What if those fall through? Do these just go to next year?
No, they will be struck off to the county. They become the county's problem.
They'll end up on our surplus list.
To be sold on that surplus list.
Yes, normally, properties that are not sold off to the county or that are not sold at the tax sale are struck off to the county, and they become our property. At that point, normally today, I would present a list of those properties to John, for the county clerk, to take responsibility for those properties. They advertise them, I guess, on their website, letting people know that they are available. In fact, I've had phone calls from people that, before the tax sale, wanted to know what would happen if they didn't all sell. I inform them to contact the clerk's office. So it would be up to them to work out arrangements with whoever was interested in the property to purchase it from the county.
And would that be another bid-type deal, John?
No, that was, do you remember the process that we put before the commission?
That was last year, wasn't it?
Last year, and that's the list of insignificant parcels, and they would be added to that. In an average year, there's more than just three.
Yeah, usually there's...
If there's multiple people who wanna buy something that's on that list...
So the way that works is, they sit on that list, and if a person makes a bid, it simmers for a week, and then if no one else makes another bid, then we sell it to the first person. If not, we ask them to put their best and final sealed offer. And that's as per the ordinance that was passed in 2019 to that effect, if we recall.
Correct me if I'm wrong. On those that are struck off, when we sell them, we still return to the person that lost the property any amount over what is due in taxes? Is that correct?
Well, the taxes and then those administrative expenses that we incur, plus interest, I mean it...
Right. Right. I mean, yeah. Because they become the county's property, we don't owe any money to the owner at the time of tax sale.
Dan?
It's rare. Usually the properties that are struck off the county are properties that are valueless.
They're junk properties.
They're less than the taxes, and that's why they're struck off.
Right.
In this case, we were talking about a couple of these properties. They're certainly valuable, they can be on the tax. I would expect multiple bids if they ended the clerk's office were having to process that, and there would be a surplus left over, quite a bit of surplus.
Hope so.
We only had, just FYI, we only had one property that sold for taxes. Every other property at least had two or a lot more bids on them.
So, all the rest, like Alma said, would go back to the individual?
The properties, right now, that, in the yellow, any monies above what is owed to the county, I will be notifying the owner at the time of the tax sale, prior to the tax sale. I will be notifying them that there are surplus funds available. I'll send them a claim form. They actually have until October of 2021 to claim those funds from our office. After that time, I prepare a report. Send anything that has not been claimed through our office to the state unclaimed property division. At that point, individuals have to go through the state to get the money. The funds are still there. It's just that by law, we can only hold them for so long. So like right now, I still have 2019's funds available until October this year, and then they will go to the state. So that's what will happen. The monies at the bottom, right now, the county owns them, unless we can get somebody else to, that had bid on them previously, to bid on them, to honor that last bid.
Okay. Thank you.
It may not, I don't know.
We'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I move approval of the May 28, 2020 tax sale of Iron County for all but three properties for a total of $423,396 in funds received and $3,840 in fees for a total of $427,236. Three properties, number 19, number 106, number 14. The high bidders have not paid. Two have already said they wouldn't pay. So the motion is to table those until the auction company has contacted the next bidder down the line to see if they want to complete the purchase. If not, they'll be struck off to the county. That's my motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept this report from Christine Louder for the delinquent property sale held May 28, 2020 as described by Commissioner Adams. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Christine. Alright, next item. Item number four, discussion and possible approval of an event permit application for an event on June 13, requested by the Utah Business Revival. Eric Mutzos. Eric, you're up.
I didn't know this was gonna be so formal, so I'm really sorry about my attire, Paul. But I have to say...
Disappoint your attire, Eric.
I have to say, after seeing you at a couple rallies, you do clean up rather well, Paul. My name is Eric Mutzos. I'm a former Salt Lake City police officer. I've served up there for seven years. Fled Babylon, moved down to southern Utah. Love it. I'm finding that I might even come to Iron County now because of how you guys operate. I've been very, very impressed with the level of patriotism and values that you guys hold here because I believe that our small businesses in Utah are being completely crushed by a lot of poor decisions. And so that's why I created the Utah Business Revival. We've done, so far, we've had four events. Two of them have been very, very helpful to these small businesses. The idea was that we were gonna work directly and indirectly with city mayors to try to immediately help these small businesses. And when I say indirectly, our first rally was in Salt Lake City. And it was a form of a protest, but it was also a business revival. And, uh, it was, it was a form of a protest, but it was also a business revival. And it was because of the, um, the snitch line that Salt Lake City put out on their residents to where you could call the police if people were not social distancing. And so I had many police officers that I still know and are my friends call me and say that they were having, you know, that their calls of service were just jacked up, going to all of these houses, telling people to get away from their neighbors. And, and it really, really fired me up, and so I, I called the snitch line and I turned myself in. Um, I told them that there was a former police officer that's gonna come and do a, a First Amendment rally. And we, I, I did a call to action. We had about three thousand people show up and we bought, we purchased food from local restaurants and had a big picnic. And it was an amazing event. Um, and it was, it was very controversial, obviously, because of, of, of what we're doing. Um, our next event, we went to, I worked directly with Mayor Julie Fulmer of Vineyard, and there was five thousand people that came to that one in Utah County. Uh, sixty-five businesses came and we helped save those businesses. There were probably seven food trucks and each one of those food trucks sold over six hundred plates. Um, we had people in tears crying because we helped them pay their mortgages, because a lot of these small businesses, as you know, they do not have, they're not getting the stimulus checks because they made too much money. And so when I created the Utah Business Revival, it was, it was to just get as many people as possible from our group to come to one location in a safe manner, especially outside, because right now it's a lot safer than when you go to Walmart. It's a lot safer when you go to all of these indoor places where a lot of the governments are corralling their people. Um, in fact, it's, I think it's twenty times, sixteen to twenty times safer to do outside, uh, and to shop outside, um, than inside. And in all of our, in all of our events, um, we have had, we have seen no spikes in COVID necessarily. We have seventeen thousand people in our Facebook group now, and I have not seen one reported case of somebody that have, that has had COVID now. Even if there was spikes or if there were cases because of what we were doing, that's still okay, in my opinion. And so I don't know if you want to ask questions or I don't know how far you want me to go into this, but, um, as most of you are aware, we tried to take this to Kaysville. We worked directly with Mayor Katie Witt, but then the city council did what they did. Then we went to Tooele. A judge, uh, issued an injunction saying that we could not go, uh, move forward with our event because we were gonna kill people at the exact same time when the judge was issuing the injunction, a BMX motocross event was happening in Tooele County that was sponsored by Tooele County, where there were thousands of people at that event. And so there have been, it's been very disheartening to see certain, uh, counties do the things that they're doing to try to stop saving small businesses and, and, uh, being a voice, trying to build up our community. When we had our, our last rally in, in Tooele, it was at the exact same time that Salt Lake City was being burned. And, and our message is that we are, yeah, we're, we're doing this in a way that's a little controversial within our First Amendment, but we're trying to build up communities and build up small business while there's groups that are tearing down. And, and so I believe that it's very, what we're doing is actually very patriotic, because when there's injustices and when there are, um, kind of draconian and tyrannical orders from health departments and, and state, um, officials, I believe that it's up to us as Americans to, to stand up in a peaceful way and a safe way, um, to let them know that our rights are, are so important.
Perfect. We had a meeting a week ago, uh, Monday and, uh, had a lot of, a lot of county leaders, um, and, uh, key, key players there at that meeting. Sheriff Carpenter wasn't there. He had another emergency going on. Um, but we met with him later and I want to thank him for meeting with us and expressing some of his concerns on ways to keep this event safer, and we've, we've worked on those and appreciate him, uh, you know, kind of landing his, um, his experience. He's been involved in a lot of these kind of events, and so I really appreciated him doing that and, and every, all the other stakeholders in our county. Uh, is there any questions for Eric?
I don't have any for Eric, no.
Okay, that's good. We'll, uh, we'll go ahead. I know there's some, some people here to comment. I know that, I know that, um, John has received some emails that folks have asked to read. Uh, do you want to go ahead and read some of those, John? Does, have some of them asked you to read those or? I thought I saw something come across our packet that, that said that. Um, maybe what we could do, and do you know how many there are, John, or?
We're in the neighborhood of thirty to forty.
Okay. And I don't, did they all ask to have it read or were there just certain ones?
Uh, when I responded, I said the commissioners will be considering an event permit and I'll forward the letter to them.
Okay, that's all, okay.
I didn't necessarily say that I would read it at the meeting.
Okay, okay. I just didn't. I thought I saw one that they asked, they asked to have read and I couldn't, I can't remember which one. I think there was at least one. Maybe you could, if you could find that, but, uh, um, I don't know if there's any others. We'll open this up, uh, so Eric, I think we're good there. Um, we might have some more questions for you, but if there's others here that have come to speak, um, we'll, we'll go ahead and extend that invitation.
Good morning. My name's Brad Green. And, uh, I first want to thank Commissioner Blake for what he said earlier. And this world has gone crazy, it seems. And, you know, Utah's done relatively a great job at protecting the citizens of Utah from this sensationalism that seems to be pushing us over the edge everywhere. And, you know, I think it's important that we stand for protecting people and the property rights that these riots have come against, and we protect, uh, people against the bodily harm that happens from violence. And I know, I, I've talked to several of my law enforcement friends and, and they see every day how emotionally draining the circumstances of, of our days are. And they deserve, uh, a lot of respect and a lot of gratitude for being willing to answer the call anyway. And to be there to these protests to ensure that they do not evolve into riots. Protesting is great, rioting not so much. I think it's really cool, it actually brings a lot of pride to me that in Iron County, Utah, we have been even better than the state as a whole at avoiding the sensationalism. For weeks, the commission has been asking the governor to allow us a little bit more normalcy, where we're already a more rural area, where people here take accountability for their actions. You guys have been standing up and leading the state. In my opinion, the state right now culturally is being led by Iron County and you three specifically. I thank you for that. Um, regarding this event, it's kind of emotional for me. You see, because small businesses have really suffered, and I run a small business, and something that maybe isn't terribly public because we save face, every business I know, starting about May first, has been having discussions on, at what point do we close? At what point do we lay people off? What do we do in case what seems to be coming actually happens? I have three hundred employees. A hundred and fifty of them are in Iron County. Those are my friends, my family, quite literally. And I don't want to lay off anybody, but there does not seem to be a huge improvement coming and it's been very hard and emotionally draining on me and on those that I know that run businesses. When I heard about this Utah Business Revival event, I thought it was cool. When they, when they did it up north and I thought, you know, I wish they would do it somewhere where they'd get less resistance, where people celebrate individual accountability, where people celebrate entrepreneurism. I wish they would do it in Iron County, and when Tooele County shut them down, I thought, oh man, Iron County needs to do this to show that we're leading the state. And sure enough, it happens that way. And I actually see a glimmer of hope in my friends' eyes. People that run businesses locally see hope. And that's good, because social unrest is the opposite of that hope. That's the end result if we don't have hope anymore. This event brings us hope, and I thank you guys for helping it happen, and I thank Eric for making it happen. Um, thank you for bringing hope back to the county. Good job.
I will say, Brad, in your, in your, um, so go ahead, come on up, Milton. Just, the, we are, we are, this agenda item is to, is to, um, is to, you know, approve this permit. So we, you know, we haven't decided on that yet. We have, we, we, yeah, I know, I know that's what you're asking. You're, you're talking, so we already have, but I'm just-
Milton McClelland, uh, uh, I've been an Iron County resident for about eight years now. Um, I, like Eric, escaped the great, I'm not gonna call it the great Satan of up north, but you know, we're getting there. Um, we, we have really thrived since we moved to Iron County. Um, I started out working at Southwest Behavioral Health as a mental health counselor there. Um, through the connections in the community, um, I was able to, with my wife, start our business here in Iron County, and now we run our own private mental health clinic. Um, and I happen to be in the field right now that's, that's seeing an uptick from the craziness that is this, this COVID nineteen thing. Um, and I'm grateful that I get that. More importantly, I'm grateful to live amongst people who respect what it is to run a small business. Um, and I want to second everything Brad said with an addition of, I, you guys get so much flack all the time and, and believe me, I give you guys flack whenever I can and I, and I, I love to give Paul flack because it's just fun. And so when you stand up and do something that really helps us out, we have an obligation to show up and stand up and thank you. And that's what I'm trying to do. And I get you haven't voted on this yet. Um, I, I have, I have a, a lot of faith that it will pass and I, and I hope that you guys will pass it. This is gonna be a good event for Iron County. We're gonna be able to give a lot of people access to things that, you know, they haven't had access to. And, and most importantly, we're gonna give them access to hope. The, the hope that's being drained right now out of people's homes. You know, we, we saw Sheriff Carpenter's reports on the domestic violence going up and the abuse going up and all those kind of things. When we're trapped, we do bad things to each other. It's just kind of what happens. Um, I'm sure the jail can talk all about that. Um, the more we can get open and get back to living life, the better we're going to be, not just from an economic standpoint, but from an emotional standpoint. We're going to be a healthier people. So this doesn't just help the businesses, this helps the people. And when we're happier, we're more willing to contribute to the community, we're more, more willing to do all these things. That's what I'm hoping this event does. I'm hoping it opens up not just our wallets, but it opens up our hearts. And I appreciate you guys for, for considering this. I appreciate the effort you've put into it. I know that there's been a lot of work done by all the commissioners, um, in, in the different departments of the county, and I just appreciate the fact that we're willing to try to do this. So please, uh, vote yes on this and please, let's have a great event that we can, uh, really provide some good opportunity here in Iron County for the rest of the state.
Thank you, Milton. John, do you have something there? Oh, okay, you bet.
Yeah, I received this email, uh, last Friday and I, I think that the commission knows where I stand on this is I, I support it and I think that it's important for, for us to move forward. However, that's not everyone's view in the county. And, um, I feel compelled to at least share this because I think it's important that we understand both, uh, views from, from our constituents. Dear Sheriff Carpenter, respectfully, I plead to you as a public leader to take a stand against the planned column raid concert stated to come to Iron County. As a community, state, and nation, it has been determined that groups larger than one hundred is a danger to those in attendance and also to all they, uh, come in contact with in the near future. Iron County does not need to be the Nevada testing ground again to see what happens to a large mass of people when exposed to a virus we know is so easily spread. The possible economic benefit this event may bring to Iron County will rapidly cost our residents who become infected in time off work, possible store or factory shutdowns, additional health costs, costs for extra police, and possibly lives. If even one life can be saved, it would be worth it. If a large spread hits Iron County, perhaps we would be forced to return to lockdown status. Perhaps the university and public schools would not be able to open. The negatives outweigh the positives in such a big way. I feel the publicity this event will bring to Iron County could bring many out of town activists protesting various topics, some of which could easily turn violent very quickly. Although I strongly believe in the ability to protest peacefully, we have seen hundreds of cases in the past weeks where this has not happened and innocent people have been harmed. Is that the kind of publicity Iron County wants to portray to our nation? Please listen to your constituents. Please look at the health department's recommendations. Please think of residents who are fighting disease, those that are over sixty-five, our heroes in the health field and their families and our children. Please assist the voice of the Iron County residents to ensure this event will not be invited to come to Iron County. Respectfully, Dennis and Sue Houston.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any others? Okay.
I am grateful to-
Could you tell us your name?
Oh, my name is Kayleen Bundy.
Thank you.
And I am grateful to be able to assemble here this morning. That is very important to me as an American. I want you to know that, uh, I think we live in the best place on all the earth. And if you reflect on the settlement of the West, you'll remember that the covered wagon companies and the handcart companies and even the cattlemen with their livestock used music to soothe them in storm, in death, and in trials. And we are going through a trial. Music and, and assembling could soothe us. I appreciate Commissioner Cousins and also Commissioner Iverson from Washington County for having the courage to invite these folks to come to Iron County and to southern Utah. I think as Americans, we need to stand up and use our rights so we don't lose our rights. And if you'll reflect on our forefathers, people gathered in, on Concord and Lexington, our Marines gathered on Normandy Beach, our pilots assembled over Germany and France, and my own father, who is almost ninety-four, served on a fleet in the Pacific Ocean during World War Two. We need to have courage and be bold and press forward. We need to be Americans. We need to not hovel in our homes. The Apostle Paul declared, "God has not given us the spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind." And I want you to know that I appreciate the wisdom that you as our Iron County Commission uses in governing our county. It is a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, just, uh, echoing what, uh, Mrs. Bundy said, um, when I, I went to the rally after the, my wife and I went up to go to the Colin Ray concert. And when I was up there, there was a, kind of an impromptu gathering in Tooele, uh, that, when it was canceled, and I went to that. And, uh, you know, I talked to Eric, the event organizer. And, uh, but before I did, I called my fellow commissioners, uh, Commissioner Blake and, and Adams, and I asked them before I made any decision, I said, "Do you think we could, uh, you know, um, extend an invitation to Iron County?" And both of them said, "Absolutely." And that was before I made any announcement or invita- invitations. Is there any others that would like to speak?
Do you want me to read a sample?
Why don't you read another one? Bill, why don't you wait? Let's go ahead and read.
I've got one from Bill.
Oh, 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 well, he's here, let's let him-
Snuck in the back.
That's kind of weird. It's like having a funeral with a person there.
I don't know how you should feel about that, Bill.
I'm not dead yet.
Oh, brother.
My name's William Presgrove. Uh, I, uh, I live about four or five miles from the, where this venue is supposed to take place. I'm over sixty-five, so I'm not, not supposed to attend, but hopefully I can hear it from my front porch. Uh, my, my concern is what is, what is happening throughout our country where individuals' responsibilities for their own health, life, and liberty and, and, uh, welfare is being superseded by government. In other words, if you, if you take a look at Mussolini's, uh, Italy, Mussolini says, "You guys can have your own private property, no problem, but this is what you're going to do with it." Uh, and to a certain extent, that's what's happening in our nation because governments are saying, "We are responsible for your health, safety, and, and, and welfare." Uh, whereas the individuals should be responsible for their own health, safety, and welfare. Uh, at this venue, uh, if an individual feels that their, um, their health is in jeopardy, then they shouldn't go. But the statistics of the riots that have been going, no indication of spikes, uh, in COVID-19 that is associated with these riots, and you know that these people are not socially distancing. Uh, then our fears for our safety should be minimal as the number of, uh, cases in our county, uh, is, is minimal. Even in Utah, I think that, uh, they, they said there are 152 deaths. And, uh, that was only four per 100,000 people in our, in our state. Uh, so the, I, I, I think that the fears that are being spread are, are twofold. Number one, they, they fear that, uh, that the, the COVID is going to spread. But number two, they fear that individuals are not responsible enough in and of themselves to do what they know they can do, uh, safely. Uh, the, the, uh, letter that was read or the email that was read, uh, by the sheriff was full of, "We are not responsible individuals ourselves, so we have to have government take care of us." And, uh, that's not the, the spirit that pervades this county. This county, people are responsible for themselves regardless of some statutes that have been put into place. So, uh, I encourage you to allow, uh, this venue to, to, uh, to happen. With the understanding that, that we are all responsible for our own health, safety, and welfare. And we shouldn't be putting it on to the county to be that. They're not, they're not our parents. They're not our, our social cops. We are the ones that should be responsible for how we, uh, act in all cases and not depend on the county and say it's the county's responsibility to make sure that I'm safe. It's our responsibility. And, uh, this, this venue promotes that ideology. And I strongly suggest that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Lee, Eneq City. I came not to participate today, but in listening to the individuals who have shared their, their feelings of liberty and self-reliance and that we can make decisions. I want to be linked and find others of that like-mindedness. I think that this is a uniting where we can allow the community of those who feel as those that have spoken for this activity to come together and to have that strength and to feel the heritage of our area and of our country and why it was established. Thank you. I please ask you to vote in favor of this activity.
Thank you, ma'am.
Frank, would you like to come up and talk about, um, Frank is the private property owner of Iron Springs Resort? And, uh, maybe you can just talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, I'm Frank Nichols and, uh, I appreciate this opportunity that's been brought to me to, uh, support the things that I'm hearing about believing in today. I'm, I'm all in for liberty and self-reliance and, uh, and doing things in a safe manner. But, uh, I, so I'm starting a small business, which is Iron Springs Resort, 10 miles west of Cedar City and one of the most historical spots in, uh, Southern Utah where the iron was founded. And, um, this, we have a lot of land out there. We have a, we have a venue that I think can support this thing in a safe manner. Then I've got the, I've seen the committee that's working on various aspects of, of, uh, putting on this event correctly and safely. And I'm impressed and there's volunteers that are, that are coming out of the woodwork to, uh, come in and assist what's going on. Uh, my personal long-term goal is to have some out, outdoor events out there. This came as a, a little bit sooner than, than I thought we might be getting something like this. But, uh, I support and I hope you can, uh, uh, vote in favor of this thing and, uh, and, and attend and may help make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. So in all fairness to our constituents, um, um, along the tone of the letter Sheriff Carpenter read there, we did receive, what'd you say, John, maybe 20 or 30, um, emails that were concerned? And, and, and I've, I answered a couple of those personally. And, uh, I got a response back and they really appreciated my response on some of the points I made. It was very, a very kind response and, and, uh, you know, they still disagreed with the event, but they understood maybe some of the things we were doing. So just out of fairness, I want to make sure that's clear. You know, but then we did, I did get 10 or so positive emails in favor of it. And then in addition to those folks that have showed up today. So I guess at that point, if there's no other, uh, and anybody else want to make a comment, um, I'll go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, absolutely.
Just, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the planning process for this because I think that, that that's also important. You know, this isn't just a open to everybody, you know, shove 20,000 people into a small area. One of the things that, that I'm obviously concerned about is public safety. And as I met with, with the commission and with Frank and, and talked with Eric and whatnot, you know, I expressed some of these concerns that I had. And the response was, was even though there's not a requirement for, uh, distancing within an outdoor venue, we looked at the code for an indoor venue and found that the code for max occupancy for a space is six to eight feet per person sitting down. And as a result, the planners adopted that eight-foot rule for the planning process to ensure that this can be done in a, you know, with a certain degree of social distancing, that it can be done in a, a manner that doesn't overoccupy the space and doesn't present other public safety, uh, safety issues. So I think that that's important for people to understand is that in the planning process of this, that it's been done very responsibly with, uh, eye towards public safety and making this a very safe and successful event. I think that's important for everyone to understand. So I just wanted to, to express that. Thank you.
And along those lines, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the event organizer, but I've, I've offered to help. Um, and we've had some meetings, um, you know, we're concerned about when it gets dark, how people are going to cross the highway safely. We've, we've taught Ahearn Rentals about some big, uh, 4,000 watt, uh, diesel generator lights that can extend up 25 feet and light up areas where it can be safe. And, you know, we do some snow fencing or some ribbon along the roads to try to have some crosswalks. This is being planned well and it will be safe. And, um, and it'll be an awesome event if it's approved. So thank you, Chair. So with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I just make one?
Oh, yes.
Point before we do that?
All right, Mike, I should have.
No, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to monopolize the meeting by any means, but I, I'd, I'd like to say in my consideration for this, when I, uh, received the call from Commissioner Cousins, uh, as he said before, uh, this was even taken into consideration, uh, my response was that I would, in, in principle, I was more than happy to support it as long as we conducted it in the right way, that we were able to, to do it safely. Not only in, uh, consideration of COVID-19, but also just in consideration of, of general public safety. I didn't know at that point whether this was a, a kegger organized by, by 16-year-old high school kids who's are responsible for our, our COVID-19 elevation and playing suck and blow out in the hills. And we can, I'm not going to go off on that rant today, but, uh, uh, we, we met with the organizers. And when I, when I say we, uh, the, the county commission, uh, the tourism office, uh, fire departments, the, the planning and zoning officers of the county. Uh, I know I'm going to miss some, but, but we tried to look at every aspect that would, uh, that would need to be to cover both safety-wise, liability-wise, and tried to have those representatives there at that meeting. And, and my, my fears were quickly calmed, that, um, this was a professional organization and, and everybody was really taking this seriously. Uh, if this were a protest or a, uh, how do I put this? I don't know that I can make this politically correct, but if this were a screw you to the government, to the governor's office or whoever that may have been directed to, it's not something that I would support. One of my responsibilities as a commissioner is to, uh, I sit on the board for the, uh, local chamber of commerce. Uh, there have been some really good discussions within that organization as far as, uh, helping businesses understand the, the need to keep this safe, to have proper, uh, distancing mechanisms in place. There are many, many organizations that are, are looking at this. And I, I think that it's important to, to know, to make sure that everybody understands this is not, uh, this is not an event that is, I don't know, sanctioned or sponsored by the county in any way. Uh, the reason that it comes to us is just the requirement for a large gathering event permit. But I, I really think that it has been looked at responsibly over and above what my expectations would be in, in coming into the event. I, I've been really pleased to see the, uh, the efforts taken on by the Nichols family and, and their property. Uh, I think it's, uh, they're really, I don't think there's a better place to have the event. It's, it, it's, it's very appropriate and I've been really impressed with the process, even though it's only been a week. This is, you know, really come together quickly and professionally. And I've, I've appreciated being part of that process so that I can make an informed decision when it comes to if this is something that's in, in, uh, the interest of our constituents.
Commissioner? Oh. Want to come up to the mic?
Dan, could you come up to the mic?
I've had a couple of questions directed at me as the, the CFO budget officer, if there's any county funds. And I've said, what Mike has said, this isn't a county event. We're not, we don't have any budgeted. We're not doing anything. So I was just hoping that, that, that could be clarified and, um, and just a personal question of mine. I've, I'm hearing concert, I'm hearing rally. Is this a political rally? Is it a concert? May, is there, is there any agenda published or anything like that? So I just, that's just a personal question.
Why don't you stay right there? Eric, why don't you come up and, and address that question?
Can I just say one thing real quick?
Sure.
Just the one thing that the sheriff's office is going to be doing is traffic control of Highway 56 and Iron Springs Road because that is a state highway and a major intersection.
Okay, thank you. Eric, you, you want to answer his questions? Why don't you step here, Dan?
So this is, this is a business revival slash concert event. The reason why we have, uh, Colin Ray is to get even more people to help those small businesses because, and this is where I would love your help, um, with this group of people in this room, is to invite as many local businesses in Iron County to come set up their booths because they have a free space, um, to where they're going to set up on the perimeter, um, where they can have a 10 by 10 or wherever they need. And so it's, it's, it's more of a business revival, this one. Now, we've had a couple that have been more rallies, like with the snitch line and stuff like that. But this particular event is, is to save these local small businesses with as many people as we possibly can in a safe manner. It's going to be, it's going to be from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM. So the, the shopping is going to go from 5:00 PM till about 7:30, 8:00. But even during, as Colin Ray singing, you can still shop. Because there's going to be people that, you know, don't want to listen to the music.
So, thank you. So Dan, in full disclosure, there are some signs that the county has made for Cedar City that say event ahead. And, and, um, you know, um, we're going to use, uh, talked to Commissioner Adam, or I'm, yeah, Adams over the road department. And he's going to acquire some signage that we, we are going to use. If you feel like there is a, a rental fee that we need to pay, uh, uh, we, we can, um.
As in, we're going to borrow signage from Cedar that, that, uh, the county may, because we have that wonderful sign shop in Cedar City purchase that. But for, to help with public safety and we'll be borrowing cones to use. So if we need, if we need to pay for that, a rental on that, we'll definitely do that.
And in the, in the end.
Well, well, we're.
The event is what we're saying.
In the end, my group, we can, we can come up with whatever funds we need. So just in case if.
Hey, I, I'm not saying I'm pro or against, I just want to keep the lines really clear.
Right.
What is county? What is the event? When we say we, are we the organizers? Are we the county commission? Are we the county?
Well, I say we, if we, if we approve this, I'm saying we, it should be them, the, the, the event organizer. Yes, so that's correct.
So, because, because I know people are going to ask me, what was county money spent on this? Was it budgeted? Because if it's controversial, of course, it always comes down to the money and, so I just want to make sure. That's, that was my question is, what is being spent? At some point, if it's a county event, now it becomes a liability question, so.
No. And I've got a press release I'll read after the vote, um, but if.
It's not a county event, but we are, because of public safety concerns, we are helping with some of these things. And we have Indemnity Pool, which is our, it's 24 counties in Utah that self-insure. And, uh, our director, Johnny Miller, said, "No problem with, because we are, that they are using some county property to park on." He had no problem with that whatsoever and, uh, said we'd be covered. And he also talked, and, and by the way, this will be completely free. There, there will be no charge. And because of that, uh, there's what's called the Recreational Immunity Act. So if, if someone is injured, I guess they could file a lawsuit, but the judge should throw out any kind of, of, uh, award because, uh, when somebody holds an event on their property and they don't charge, then there is an immunity from, uh, from judgment. They're coming, they're coming as their own free. Right, right.
So John projected the map. Gold Civil was kind enough to do a little drawing showing the venue. The parking on the left, that is county property. And that's what Commissioner Adams referred to with U.SIP of any liability parking on our proper, on the county property. The rest of the outlined areas are the private property owner, Iron Springs Resort. And, uh, that was just to get a feel for how many acres, how many square feet and, and just run some numbers for social distancing and see how that would work. The, the, the property across the street, and that's if, just so everybody knows, right there to the right of that property is where the statues are up that road. Uh, there's good views from that whole area, so there, people can really spread out and see well, um, through the whole, through that whole venue. So there's, there's, we feel like there's ample property there to social distance and have a safe event, so. And do you have anything else?
I probably should quit, but just want, uh, I want you to know that I'm very concerned. I had a number of emails and, and I, uh, I'm concerned with people's feelings. And, uh, you know, there's some older people, um, you know, I know one lady, the cancer survivor, her and her husband. I know one lady, a cancer survivor, her and her husband are both in their eighties. Really, you know, wonderful people, and they're concerned. And I had one, and all the emails have been respectful, and I appreciate that on both sides. Had one phone call that wasn't respectful, but that's okay. I got really thick skin. But anyway, we do care. We're not being cavalier about public safety if we go forward with approving this. But, you know, people are really down, a lot of businesses. And I mentioned to a friend of mine, right when this started, well, he's a farmer like I am. And I said, "Well, we're in good shape, because we're in the food chain." And then he says, "Well, I don't know about that." He says, "I've got a five-hundred head of cattle, and I can't even get a bid on them." And I couldn't believe how quickly, you know, it affected pretty much every sector. I guess if you make hand sanitizer or something like that, you know, you're probably really doing well. And other things have, you know, the same. But anyway, quickly, my wife and I, it was our anniversary Saturday, we went to a local restaurant, and it was packed, but yet there was distancing. There were groups that were together, but I mean, by packed, I mean it was just so nice to just go there and see normality again, and masks, which was good. And when I put my hand on the menu, you know, it was damp, because they just wiped it down. And we went in without getting close to anybody. We had a wonderful meal, we waved at some people, and we left, you know. And then my church decided it was time to go back, and we actually split our ward and went in two different meetings yesterday. And it was so, it's just so nice. And the same thing, we went in, we sat separate from other people. And when the meeting was over, we went out the back door into our car, you know. And I'm sixty-seven, so I can't even come to this concert unless, I can, you can, Bill. But if, you know, and I've, you know, I've got my mask here, but...
It's my choice.
It's your choice, absolutely. I'll tell you, I took a picture, I've got a daughter that's really concerned. I took a picture when I was in church yesterday, because probably half the people there were over sixty-five. Eighty-year-olds, but they wanted to come, you know, and they were smart, they were wise about it. Oh, and then the one last thing that makes me feel the most good about this, or, you know, overcome my worry about public safety and health, is that Dr. Blodgett says it's nineteen times safer for an outdoor event than it is for an indoor event. So I think we can do this properly, and I don't think we're going to have a surge from it. And anyway.
And to echo what Alma said, I have talked to Dr. Blodgett at length about this event. And we are in compliance with the yellow guidelines from the governor. And that's if we do the six-foot distancing, and that's, of course, that's up to people. If you go to the ball fields and watch softball going on, or the, Washington County's hosting the state rodeo finals, where there's going to be thousands of people. The Northern Utah venue would not hold that, so Commissioner Almquist said we'd love to do it down here. So they're going to have a huge rodeo event in Washington County. So it's really, once somebody goes to one of these events, it's still personal responsibility. You know, it's up to them if they want to social distance. We can't force that, but we do have the room to allow it. But I just wanted to mention that we have, I have been in contact with Dr. Blodgett. I know Mike works with him a lot in his responsibilities, and all of us do, as well as Alma. But we are within the yellow guidelines from the governor's directive. And then that also goes to the, you know, warning about the age. And warning that, hey, if you're over this age, it could be a little bit more of a risk to you, but it's up to you whether you want to come. And so with that, entertain them all. And I apologize, Commissioner, I got ahead of myself before, so I've met to...
If, when you make a motion to approve, if you do, I would suggest that you also waive the thirty-day requirement. This was applied for ten days before, but you have the power to waive that thirty-day requirement if you choose to make a motion in favor.
Okay.
We ready? I move for approval of an event permit requested by Utah Business Revival for an event on June thirteenth to be held at the Iron Springs Resort. Also make mention that we do require a thirty-day, this event request be made thirty days in advance, but waive that condition of the permit.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow the Utah Business Revival to conduct an event at the Iron Springs Resort on June thirteenth. It will be hosting a Colin Ray concert. And typically, as was mentioned, that we require a thirty-day in advance approval, but we waive that under these circumstances. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. And I'd like to read a, I put together late Saturday night, I put together a statement that we could put out and had some others. We've all looked at it, and just wanted to read this in case we did approve this today. But this will be going out as a press release. It says, "Dear Iron County citizens, during this difficult time of COVID-19, we are devastated with the news of the cancellation of the Utah Shakespeare Festival, Summer Games, July Jamboree, and many other events that help define who we are as a community. Keep rents paid and keep food on our local tables. We are keenly aware of the fine balance between keeping our hospitals below capacity while taking seriously the mental and financial effects that the response to this illness has precipitated. It is important that all of us take seriously precautions aimed at reducing the spread of disease. It is also important that we take steps to allow businesses and families a chance to recover. The Utah Business Revival Organization has partnered with a private landowner ten miles west of Cedar City to host an outdoor concert event. Iron Springs Resort is excited to allow them to have this event on their private property. The venue has many acres where such an event can safely happen without the crowding of more traditional venues. We have confirmed that there is ample room for concessions and activities plus social distancing between groups for many more attendees than are expected. Iron County has encouraged the organizer of the event to comply with the governor's guidance and plan. We encourage social distancing of at least six feet between groups while they enjoy this event. Consistent with the plan, we advise anyone that is over sixty-five years of age or otherwise at risk not to attend. We are grateful that this group has united to offer this concert in a safe manner, provide an opportunity for our hospitality workers to catch up on rent, and have a chance for all of us to celebrate hope in a future where all of us will prosper once again." So, thank you for that, and thank you all for the comments, and we will move to...
Can I make one more comment really quick? Man, I feel like, usually I just try and keep my mouth shut and get this thing over with, but... No, today, one other consideration. And as some may know, and some may not, I'll just touch on this really quickly at the very beginning of this whole outbreak. Again, as part of my responsibility with the emergency management and public safety of the county, we put together a county COVID task force. Basically, what that is, is leaders of the community, mayors, mayor, city managers, police chiefs, fire chiefs, hospital, school board, S U U, the kind of the main players and big groups in the community. A representative from there comes, we meet as we feel needed. And the purpose of our group is to disseminate information that's correct, to try and quell in the rumor mill and get things, get correct information to those organizations who in turn can get that out to the public. That being said, one of the things that we do recognize is that we are experiencing a spike in the COVID-19 disease at the moment. But with that being said, we know through those conversations with the people directly involved, we know where that spike originated. We know that it is not a general, community-based spike. People aren't getting sick because of going to restaurants, or going to retail shops. This was a really specific area that it originated, and then unfortunately got into our high school kid population, because they chose to do some really dumb stuff on graduation night. And they've brought that back to parents and family members. But the spike that we're having is not because of well-planned events and/or businesses. And I think the most important thing to understand is at this point, we have zero hospitalizations in the Cedar City Hospital, even though we have this exponential spike. So we're seeing people test positive, but what we're not seeing is serious illness that requires hospitalization or deaths. And I think that that is really important that we consider as we go out and support our local businesses and support our economy. One other thing that we followed really closely, in talking with the governor's office, we really hoped for a green designation. That doesn't mean that the virus is gone, but we've been working towards a green designation by next weekend. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. The Public Health and Economic Emergency Commission of the Utah Senate recommended that most of Utah transition to a smart green risk level effective immediately this last weekend. The governor's office declined that recommendation for whatever reason. But we're going to, and just so people know, we're in the process of drafting a letter to the governor's office as the Iron County Commission with input from our COVID-19 task force to request that Iron County be moved to a green status, just because I think we're ready for that. And the input from our community leaders is that we're ready for that. We're not seeing serious illness, we're not seeing the deaths. We need to open our economy back up and move people in the direction of just getting back to life and doing it responsibly. So that kind of pigtails on with this other issue, but we are working with that, and we'll have that letter drafted and sent out today. So, I hope, I'm drafting it. I'm not as, when we're finished, the other commissioners will look at that and hopefully feel good about penning their name to that. But that's the direction that we're moving in as a commission.
Thank you. And just to add to that, Mike, I've talked to some medical experts recently that said one of the worst things we could do is go into the fall when the flu season hits us hard, and without developing some herd immunity in our community. So the fact that we're having some cases, a lot of them are mild. As Mike said, there's no hospitalizations. The fact that they're mild, people are getting it, getting over it, and developing some herd immunity before we hit the flu season in the fall. And the last thing we want to see is the government try to shut us down again, so, thank you. We will go to our next agenda item, if there's nothing else on that one. Let's see, discussion, number five, discussion and possible approval of a proposal to install a, now, Jeannie instructed me on how to pronounce this. I'll probably still mess it up. Photovoltaic, is that right? Photovoltaic solar system on the Iron County Visitor Center.
Thank you, is he just calling it a solar system? That's what we do.
Come on, I got it right.
You did.
Okay.
For the record, it was me that spelled it wrong, so.
What we have is, I worked with a couple companies. First, trying to figure out the size and the scope of this particular project. On that paper that I handed you, there's two of them. If you go to the second paper, it actually just kind of shows the annual usage of the power of that building. And roughly, the visitor center uses just over fifty kilowatts of power a year. And so that's how we determined the size of the system to put out for RFP. What we were looking for is, it's a thirty-kilowatt solar system. That building happens to be two oh eight three phase, which adds a level of difficulty to it. And so with that being the case, this particular RFP kind of had some restrictions in it, because we needed companies that had the ability to be able to put it on a commercial. This is a commercial application, not a home application. So there's a little bit of difference in the equipment, and mainly the attaching, because if you do it wrong, all of a sudden we're sending power back to Rocky Mountain Power that is detrimental to their system and deadly to other people. So on that, we went through the RFP process back in May. On my dates on that, this actually closed on the eleventh of May, and I was actually, actually the eighth of May, and I was actually going to bring it to you earlier. But as the commissions are aware, I don't think most of the communities are aware, a portion of the money for this project is being granted to us from, it used to be First Wind, First Wind and Solar. Do you know what it's now, Terry? Do you remember?
D Shaw and Company right now.
Yeah, D Shaw and Company, they're providing, yeah. They are providing some of the funding for this. So this is not... What's that?
You know the amount of their contribution?
The total contribution is seventy-five thousand, but we have it earmarked for a couple projects. But that's how much that they are willing to go. And on the projects that that was earmarked for was this, the solar charging station, and also an electric vehicle for our solar campaign that Reed Erickson has been doing to promote solar panels and the solar industry in Iron County, trying to get more companies to come in and build more solar farms. I felt on the two projects that this was, this particular project over the charging station, and so I kind of pushed this one ahead of the other one, as this one we actually get immediate benefit back from. We cut down, essentially, we will cut down on Maria's operating cost, because we'll be reducing our own power instead of purchasing the power. Now, on the cost proposal, I actually ended up having one company bid back with me on this. Pricing-wise, national standards, and I should have wrote it down, that my costs are right on the money. For these type of systems, we are looking between three to four dollars a kilowatt hour. And so when we're producing, if you look at that, there's, there's three different price range. John, if you want to go to the cost proposal at the bottom.
The one with the picture?
Yeah, the one with the picture. So what we have is, you have a three-twenty watt system, a three-fifty-five watt system, and a three-sixty watt system. What that is, is those are actually different brands of solar panels. And how solar panels work is they are kind of like, essentially like a car or any, or a water heater, or even, you know, your cabinetry, where you have your economy model that you could come in and we can get, and it's going to get you going, but ten years down the road, you're going to be paying the cost for it. That's kind of essentially what we're looking for here, is where we have, solar panels have a lifespan, and as the price goes up, that graph goes out further. So what I'm actually recommending us to approve is the sun power, the three hundred, the three-sixty watt for the thirty-nine, or eighty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. That one gives us the most bang for our buck. We will pay a little more upfront now, just about nine, just under nine thousand more now. But in thirty years from now, these panels will still be producing and still be viable, where the other ones will no longer be viable.
Question, you mentioned about getting the right expertise, so we didn't put wild power, whatever. But we still, anything we don't use still goes on the system.
Yes, what happened?
We get paid for that?
Rocky Mountain Power doesn't pay you for that, but you're, what we're shooting for is a zero.
Right.
Truthfully, we can't afford the zero on this building. During the winter, we'll zero out. We'll actually probably give money back, or we won't, um, we'll produce more power in the winter than we use. During, during the summer, we'll still use more power than we, than we can produce just on the shares because of the, uh, power demands of the, of the building. Uh, you know, because in the summer when we're running those ACs, we're actually running about 60 kilowatt. Or six, uh, 6,000 kilowatts a month, which, and this only producing about five.
Will it be net metered?
Yes, it will be net metered.
So, any surplus you gain in the winter will be eaten up as the temperatures warm up? Have you done a calculation on what the ROI is or just even the, the numbers per year, the dollars per year that you might save?
Yes, actually.
Figured you had.
They did. It's in my, this is actually one of the best proposals I've ever gotten.
Be curious, we put a, uh, about three years ago, we put a, a 70 KW system on our cabinet shop and, uh, it reduced the power bill by 80%.
And what this one is?
I don't know how this one would be.
This one, it, um, sorry, I should have put that question.
Well, while you're looking for, I have one on my home and, and we, I, I asked them to round up a little bit in their design of it and I only pay a power bill about two months out of the year. The rest of the time I would just pay the interconnect.
And that's, but we were trying to, county funds are very sacred to me.
Right.
And so, I, I have so much that I can put for, you know, that I felt comfortable putting forward to this and that's kind of what we came down to. What it roughly works out to and is it's a, most of the year, it's actually, oh, we'll produce more than we, than we actually do. Where is that? Sorry, I read that thing on Thursday. I'm not thinking, it's actually on the one I gave you. That's where I saw it. So, it's actually on the second page I gave you is the cost analysis. So, essentially, the, the value of how the system is valued is, uh, we'll be producing $4,000 worth of power a year, which, you know, for a homeowner, that's a lot of power, but for us, that's actually not a lot. We, we spend a lot on, on our, on our, uh, energy costs for our buildings. And I believe, um, that's, I, I, I think on that particular building with the reports I got back from August, we're spending about, uh, 5,000 a year on that building for power, so.
So, you'd have the interconnect cost plus another about 1,000?
Yeah.
That you'd be paying, but you'd be saving the roughly 4,000.
Roughly saving 4,000.
So, that's about the same as mine, about 80%.
Yeah, about 80%. And that's what we were shooting for. You can shoot for 100% power, that is, but you have, you have the give and takes.
Right.
It was 75, because I know the grants were more than this, but still, with that large grant, this really makes a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, we have three phases in that building?
Yeah, all our, all of our buildings have three phases.
Is it just for the AC? Do we need three phases in there?
No, we don't use the three phase. What you use the three phase in the commercial building, this building has three phases in it.
Right.
It just, it smooths your loads out.
Yeah.
So, when they, uh,
But that also means they have to, they have to line up the sine curve or whatever when it's going back out, right?
Well, in, instead of having essentially one inverter, we have to have three inverters. We have to have one for each phase.
And they have to coordinate with the?
Yeah, and they all have to see each other and it's, there's, um, hardware that goes into that, that's.
Cool technology.
Because what, what happens on, and because these are getting really popular on pivots.
One thing you might consider, because on mine, and I don't know what your vote, but mine was a 240 high leg coming in and we had to reduce it down to 208 to, to deal with the inverters and then go back to 240, so it was, and I had to buy a pretty expensive transformer to do that.
Yeah, lucky enough, we're straight 208 on each.
So, that's good. That'll, that'll work then.
Yeah, because we have the problem on the, the pivot ones where you actually have the 480 high leg and we have to make sure that that 480 high leg, it doesn't backfeed onto the other legs because it, they potentially can.
All right. Is that it?
That's it.
So, we've, our choices are those three, the 78, 891, 81, 600 or the 89, 400?
Yeah.
Those three, that's, that's.
It's all the same, it's all the same contractor, this is all, I guess I should have said it's Intermountain Windows Solar. Um, they were very, very nice company to work with so far. Um, like I said, this is probably the best proposal I've gotten and that's including public safety building and this one when we remodeled it.
And these are roof mount panels?
Yeah, roof mount panels and you, you can see on there, they're, they'll all be on that.
Facing south.
That south exposure on that building.
All right. And what is it?
Seen that much really, because it's kind of across the creek and so on and?
Well, and honestly, we want it to be seen.
You want, okay.
Because it's the whole point of this, is we're, this is actually to be, to be seen to say, look at Iron County because, um, Terry's going to have to correct me because I don't know the number of acres we have in solar panels, but this is to celebrate that, show off that.
My house.
What's that?
I quit counting 10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. It shouldn't be, my house faces south and so I can't bring myself to put solar panels on the front of my house, you know, but, but I, I understand where you are, I understand where you are. So, I'm going to put one out to the side maybe. Anyway, uh, based on, um, Lester's recommendations, I move that we go with this project and that we, uh, go with SunPower 360 watt system, 89,400. That's my motion.
Second. It's been moved, moved and seconded to approve to install a photovoltaic, uh, solar system on the Iron County Visitor Center at the cost of 89,400, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll be getting the contract together for this because I didn't put it together because we had the three options. I'll have Mike look at it and you guys sign it, so.
Thanks, Lester.
Thank you.
All right, uh, personnel, Jennifer, you're up.
All right, first up is for URS. Uh, for the upcoming fiscal year beginning July 1st, URS is set to increase the Tier Two Public Safety portion approximately 4.27%. The employer portion will be increased 2% and a mandatory employee contribution of approximately 2.27% will be imposed, which funds the pension benefit of the hybrid or the 401K option. My proposal for your consideration is for Iron County to elect to pick up the employee portion of the Tier Two Public Safety. URS contributions not to exceed 2.27% beginning July 1st, 2020 for the 37 Iron County employees affected by this increase. If there are any questions on this, I'm happy to answer those.
We've, I think you've, you know, gone through it with all of us individually, um, and, and done a really good job with it. Is there any question?
Tell me, sorry, would you, what was the, uh, what was the increase?
For just the employee contribution increase total for the year, fiscal year, um, just that portion is 36,797.56.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So, I would move for approval, uh, the Tier Two, Tier Two Public Service Employee Portion Pickup, the effective date of 7/1 of 2020. And, uh, that will be a 4.27% increase, uh, with a $36,797.56 price tag to the county.
So, it'll be, sorry, 2.27% employee pickup.
That's what I.
Sorry, I apologize.
I knew it was two, but I wrote four and I'm looking at it going, I know that it's not four, but.
2.27.
2.27.
Okay, okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the two-tier, or the Tier Two Public Service Employee Portion Pickup, uh, and that's an increase of 2.27% increase at the cost of 36,797.56, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
With that pickup, um, the URS is requiring a signature page, so I'll bring that to you.
I think this was a really important thing to, to pick up for, for many different reasons, shows our support of those Tier Two employees, but it also, if, if we weren't to have done this, I think we would have opened a, a nightmare for recruiting in the law enforcement arena and we've worked really hard the last couple of years to try and overcome that and to, to get us where we need to be as far as recruiting and employee retention, so that's, I think that's really important that we take care of those guys.
I agree, thank you.
And gals.
Definitely. All right, next up, um, is the Engineering Department. Um, with the addition of the Quichaprop project and all of that entails, the job title of excavator operator is only a portion of what that position now is taking on. Did the daily job functions that are now taking place are more aligned with that of a lead excavator inspector position? And the proposal for your consideration is to change that job description in the Engineering Department from excavator operator to lead excavator inspector.
Okay, yeah, why is his name slipping me?
I forgot that.
Curtis does such an awesome, he does an awesome job and, yeah, he, he needs to have this changed. I move approval of job description change for the Engineering Department from excavator operator to lead excavator slash inspector.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the change of job description for Curtis De Mill for the Engineering Department from excavator operator to lead excavator inspector, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I would just like to echo what Alma said, um, I've worked around Curtis, um, since I've been here and he's in, and having been in excavation all my life, um, he is an incredible, sure, sure appreciating.
All right, so next is for the Building Department. Um, a reevaluation of the Building Department has been in the works for well over a year now. Um, and now that Terry Palmer has come on board as the Department Lead, we've been working together to structure the department with job positions that are more in line with the tasks that these employees are completing. Um, for many months, the department has worked together with one less employee and they've adjusted their workload by taking on more tasks, um, without hiring for that vacancy. For your consideration, we propose the change of the following three building zoning positions. Job description change from lead maintenance building project manager to deputy building official, maintenance zoning supervisor. Um, the second one is job, um, description change from secretary to office manager. And the third is a job description change from maintenance technician to lead facilities maintenance worker, inspector and zoning officer. And any questions that you may have, Terry is here as well, we can, we can answer together. Don't need to throw you under the bus, but.
I, I'd just like to comment on this really quickly, the, these are, uh, these are changes that, uh, we were working on even prior to, uh, Mr. Nay retiring from the Building Department. Uh, this is something that's, we've spent a lot of time and effort in, in these changes. Uh, it's, I'm glad to see this be able to move forward. Uh, with that, I would move for approval, uh, first of job description change for Building and Zoning Department from lead maintenance inspector, lead maintenance inspector, maintenance, uh, to deputy building zoning official, and that's, uh, Lester Ross.
And is there, do we need to add bottle washer to that?
Maybe, yes.
I, I think the most important clause in any of these job descriptions is other duties as assigned.
That's exactly right. That's the most important one on all.
That means we can basically use and abuse them within, within, uh, reason.
Reason, right.
So, uh, lead maintenance inspector, maintenance, uh, to deputy building zoning official. Uh, in the next, with the job, move for approval of job description change, again in the Building and Zoning Department, from inspector, maintenance technician to lead facilities, maintenance worker. and that would affect, that, uh, Nathan Dennett is currently in that position. Uh, and also move for approval of the job description change for Building and Zoning Department from secretary to office manager, uh, for Chelsea Boxwell.
Did we miss something, John?
No, no, you're fine, it's just there's, the, the first section is the job descriptions and then the, then the second, second section will be the granular person by person.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay, uh, so it's been moved and seconded as, uh, to, and I don't know if I want to say all that again. Mike, if you got it right, let's go with that, so.
I read it just as John put it, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
It rang true from what our discussions have been.
So, we'll go on to corrections, um, for the approval of a promotion for Jill Davenport. She has completed all requirements to be promoted from a secretary one to a secretary two, and with this promotion, her pay will be adjusted to fall within the county guidelines. Um, and then I'll just go with the corrections first and then we can go on to the next. Um, as well as corrections, the approval of new hire Hannah Quinn Worthland, um, she goes by Quinn. So, Quinn was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill for the vacant medical technician, um, deputy position, effective date 6/14/2020. And Jill Davenport, um, effective date would be 5/31/2020.
That's your department, Mike.
Okay, uh, I would move for approval of promotion for Jill Davenport from secretary one to secretary two, effective date, uh, May 31st, 2020. Uh, also approval of new hire Quinn Worthland as medical technician, effective date 6/14 of 2020 with the appropriate pay grades.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for these, uh, changes in the Corrections Department voted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next for Engineering Department for Curtis De Mill. Curtis De Mill, uh, I did not write that one down. Let me grab his. Um, has completed all requirements.
He already did that one.
We already, we just did.
We did that one up above.
I know, but we're doing just the.
That's what I was trying to say, the first bit was changing the job description.
Job descriptions.
Now, we're doing the.
Oh.
No worries.
I see, I'm sorry.
I'm going to, I'm going to do.
I can't spell photovoltaic, so, they can't say it.
No worries. So, Curtis De Mill has completed all requirements to promote him from an excavator operator to a lead excavator inspector and his, um, pay will be adjusted to fall within county guidelines as well.
I move approval of the promotion for Curtis De Mill in the Engineering Department for excavator operator, or from excavator operator to lead excavator slash inspector, effective date 6/14/2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to with a change in the Engineering Department as described, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then last, we'll go through the building. Um, approval of promotion for Lester Ross from lead facilities maintenance to a deputy building maintenance zoning official, effective date 6/14/2020, and with this promotion, his pay will be adjusted to fall within county guidelines. Next will be approval of promotion for Chelsea Boxwell from secretary to office manager, effective date 6/14/2020. With this promotion, her pay will also be adjusted to fall within county guidelines. And last is the approval of promotion for Nathan Dennett from maintenance technician to lead facilities maintenance worker, inspector, zoning officer, and with this promotion, his pay will be adjusted to fall within county guidelines.
I would move for approval, move to approve, uh, promotion of Lester Ross from lead maintenance inspector, maintenance, to deputy building and zoning official, effective 6/14/2020 with the appropriate, uh, pay adjustment to fit within county guidelines. I would also move for approval of, uh, promotion for Chelsea Boxwell from secretary to office manager, also effective 6/14/2020, uh, with that pay to fall within the county guidelines. And thirdly, approve, uh, promotion of Nathan Dennett from maintenance. And thirdly, approve, uh, promotion of Nathan Dennett from maintenance technician to lead maintenance worker, inspector slash zoning officer, also effective, the fourteenth of this month, twenty twenty, with the appropriate pay increase to fit within the approved county guidelines.
So Nathan is different than what's on the, the agenda?
He, so- We need, the inspector and zoning officer was, well, let me look back up here.
Lead facilities maintenance worker.
Is he also an inspector?
He is, because Nate's also, Nate's also building inspector, that, that falls within his-
No, he is, but I, but that's going to be within-
Need to add that?
So I think, so my motion, my motion on number three would, would also include the language, uh, it'd be lead faci, lead facilities maintenance worker slash inspector slash zoning officer, is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
I apologize for not putting that on-
All right, it's been moved and seconded to make the following changes in the building and zoning department as, as noted with that correction. Thank, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Going to non-delegate, thank you, Jennifer. Um, going to non-delegate, delegated items, uh, do we have any prey dog matters? I just have to say, I was at a political rally with Commissioner Blake, and, uh, Gene Roundy was there. And, uh, I shook his hand, I didn't recognize with a mask on, but he said he'd been a commissioner for four years, and then eight years off, and then another eight years as commissioner, I think, and he just asked me about what was going on in the county, and he was just lamenting of how miserable it was with the prey dogs when he was commissioner, so it just made me appreciate that we don't have any prey dog issues much, right?
Yeah, I went through the same thing as him for a long time, and it's like died and gone to heaven. We don't hold anybody, uh,
Uh, any county board?
Okay, Danny Stewart wants to add some. Um, this is in response to the, the change in the board that happened last time with the economic development. And Danny, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, you're coming through loud and clear.
Perfect, thank you for allowing me to join you remotely today. Good afternoon, commissioners. May recall, the final meeting that we held in April, we, um, formed the, um, the economic, or the county economic development advisory board, or CED board, to be in compliance with the new rural counties grant program that was, uh, approved by the state legislature this year, will be managed by uh, Governor's Office of Economic Development, the rural, and the Governor's Rural Partnership Board. But we, we created that board, and just, just to remind you, we've had a, an existing board in place that, consists of representatives from the county, from Cedar City, um, from each of the taxing entities in the county. And we elected to keep that board and to add to it the positions that are required by the new state, uh, program. So the, uh, what I'd like to do today is approve the members of the Iron County Economic Development Advisory Board, as the, uh, county representative, Commissioner Mike Blake, as a representative of a municipality in the county, a council member, Cedar City Council member Terry Hartley, uh, the Cedar City Mayor, Miley Wilson Edwards, member of the Iron County School Board, Stephen Allen, who will be replaced by the school district after this election, uh, Water Conservancy District Representative Spencer Jones, SUU Business Resource Center Executive Director Craig Isom. So those are the members that we've had. The new members that have been proposed, I've run these names past you, and I've visited with each of these individuals. Uh, representative from workforce development, uh, proposing Scott Levitt, who is at Southwest Technical College, uh, private sector representative, I'm proposing Brent Drew, who is VP of Business Relations or Business, uh, Operations at Port Fifteen, Utah. A member of the public who lives in Iron County. Um, proposing Molly Halterman, who is a business owner in Parowan. And we have the option to add additional members as well. I would like to, uh, propose Brianhead Mayor Clayton Callaway, and also the executive director of the SUU Regional Services, Stephen Lizenby. So five new names, Scott Levitt, Brent Drew, Molly Halterman, Stephen Lizenby, and Clayton Callaway.
Okay. I move approval of, to add the following individuals to the Iron County Economic Development Advisory Board. Uh, Scott Levitt, Brent Drew, Molly Halterman, Clayton Callaway, and Stephen Lizenby, all of whose, uh, uh, titles have been delineated by Danny, our economic development director.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to add, um, the following individuals as we've described, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll now be able to meet as a committee and move forward with this new program. I think it'll be very beneficial for the, the county as a whole, so thank you.
Thank you, Danny, appreciate, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we missed?
No, sir.
Okay, if not, we'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.